I've got a banner that says, "Meeting is now streaming live on Facebook." Are we go, Morgan?
I am cross-checking on my multiple computers here and, you know, okay, it appears we are live. Sorry for the delay.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening for our committee of the whole meeting. The meeting will come to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Hater?
Here.
And Reno?
Here.
Hunt?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Smolka?
Here.
Shupai?
Here.
Wong?
Here.
Thank you very much. The mission of School District 15 is to produce world-class learners by building a connected learning community. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now, we'll start the meeting today with public comments. I understand that we have many of them. Public comment will be taken or has been taken through a Google form that has been shared to the community via email and through social media. Comments have been received in from the community up until the meeting was called to order at approximately 6:30 PM. Any submissions received will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting right now, as long as they comply with board policy 2.2, 2:30, public participation at Board of Education meetings, and petitions to the Board. Submissions will also be posted in Board docs so that you can review them at a later time, and they will be posted on the district's website so that members of the general public are able to view them after the meeting. Yeah, thank you in advance for everyone that put in comments. We have many, so this should take a little bit of time.
Okay, we have 90 comments, so I'll do my best to go through them as quickly as possible. First comment is from Bill Meyer. "Assuming that there will be some virtual learning, can we request that classes are held online, real-time, via Google Meet or other software? The learning in the spring was adequate, but my daughter fell behind without the real-time interaction. I have been working remotely since March, and all meetings and educational material has been done live via software that allows sharing of screens, etc. A livestream of the teacher at the Board would be ideal, but I may require more people to help film, etc. My wife and I both have risk factors that leave us susceptible to the harsher complications of COVID-19, and for that reason can't see my children. One is at friends physically going to school at this time." Thank you. The next comment is from Sonia, no last name. "Please consider doing classes only, please consider doing classes online only for fall season. Virus is still here, and it will be tough for kids to maintain social distances in school setting. Thank you for considering my opinion." Next, we have Valerie Salgado. "There are many parents that have underlying conditions that put them at higher risk if they contract the virus, so the option of distance learning should be available." Next is Naveen Jana Parretti. And this comment is blank. Next comment is from Jill McInerney. "I wish to plead for a cohort model where the same 10 kids can travel together and interact together so that specials and social outlets like lunch can be part of the daily routine. If kids are expected to spend six and a half hours in one seat with no interactions or physical outlets, we need an opt-out-at-home option." Next comment is Michelle Banks. "Will students that have parents who choose not to send their children back to school in person be provided access to the classes via Google Meets, or will there be an alternative format available like homeschooling?" Next is from Selma Sarkic. "As a full-time working parent of an active, curious, and a hunger-for-learning child, I am begging you to reopen our school for in-person learning. We are all aware of the severity of this virus, but at the same time, we need our children to receive adequate and quality education by professionals. Finding childcare is more and more difficult each day. Please understand that many families have both working parents and are not able to secure childcare or even afford childcare. Families are hurting financially. Many have lost their jobs and need to be back into the workforce to provide for their families. Our children are suffering. Our children are missing school, their teachers, and their classmates. They are the biggest victims here. Their lives were changed overnight, and they were forced to give up everything they have grown to love and do. Please let our children go back to school. Thank you." Next is Brandy Morgan. "I understand kids need to get back to school and back to their routine, but I am not 100% confident in sending my kids back. If schools are opened, I feel like e-learning should be an option for those not ready to send their kids back into schools. More Zoom meetings compared to previous e-learning and/or videos of the teachers' lessons. Those that don't feel safe sending their kids back shouldn't be punished for doing what we feel we need to do to keep our kids safe. Some places are talking of finding those that don't send their kids. That is not necessary and is uncalled for. Another option for schooling could be e-learning on some days and class on others, possibly some half-days. I also feel like parents want thorough cleaning practices and want to know what they are. I look forward to the day our kids can safely go back to school." Next, sorry, I have a child screaming in my house right now. Next is Joan Cheryl. "School districts, especially large ones, are in an impossible situation given COVID. It is unreasonable to expect the district to solve all angles. It's time for the community to step up and pitch in. If you can drive your child to school to alleviate buses, you need to. Parent or high school students can volunteer to help other parents with childcare and tutoring. We need to lower our expectations on academics. Most of all, safety needs to come first for students and staff." Next is Stella Abua. "Our family will prefer to have our children stay home and do the online e-distance learning until COVID-19 is completely put in control in the country and in our community." Next is Snajada Andrea. Her comment just says, "Okay." Next is Teresa Grinning. "First off, like many others, I would like to say thank you for your time, diligence, and dedication to our district, the community, and our students. If a plan being considered is continued distance education, I ask that you address the level of commitment that the district will strive to achieve regarding differentiated education for students as well as live teaching. I ask that this level of commitment is discussed regardless of the ISB recommendations. Thank you." That was a repeat comment. We have quite a few of those, so I may be pausing for a moment in between. Repeat meaning a parent submitted the same comment more than once. Sharice Jennings. "What specific measures will be put in place for kids with parents that are at high risk with COVID-19?" Michelle Curly. "Are the water fountains going to be on?" Lakshmi Srivali Kristum. "Please provide complete online classes until there is a vaccination for COVID-19. Still, the numbers are raising, and we would like the kids to be safe." Next is another repeat comment. Karen Pollock. "I love the dual-language program. Please let the teachers, planners of the program know that we love what you are doing, but we also need to have the directions, expectations of the children in English as well as Spanish. It was rough doing learning in another language when the home parent is English-speaking. We are trying our best to learn Spanish, but I am not fluent yet. Most of the instructions were in English and Spanish, but some were not. I just really need the English translations as well, especially in math and on CSO as the Spanish. Thank you." The next is Natalie Ibarra. That is a blank submission. Maria Campillo. "In the event that a classmate were to test positive for COVID, how and when would you contact the remainder of the class, and what further steps would be taken after?" Next is Jason Hanaram. "Has there been or will there be any effort to coordinate in-person student attendance days with neighboring districts to account for the impact of childcare for both teachers and families? CCSD-15 teachers whose kids attend other districts, or CCSD-15 parents who teach in other districts?" Next is Valerie Salgado. "There are many parents that have underlying conditions that put them at higher risk if they contract the virus, so the option of distance learning should be available." Jimmy Anto, I'm gonna mispronounce this, I'm sorry, Antonopoulos. "Is your main focus to reopen this fall? If not, what technology have you added? Zoom, more real-time learning with teachers, etc.?" Next is from Lisa Wood. "If a child should have to travel to a high-risk state, will they be allowed back into school, or will they be required to quarantine for 14 days upon their return before coming back into the classroom?" Next is Rama Devi. Blank submission. The next is Lena Chiang. "A full-time distance learning option should be given to students who live with family members who are at high risk to COVID-19 in order to reduce the risk of exposure. This option should also be given to those who believe it is safer to have full-time distance learning." Next is Alicia. "I feel that as parents, we should have the choice, and so should the children, to choose whether or not they want to do homeschooling or online schooling versus going to school. During this pandemic, as we see the numbers have not reduced, they continue to go up. I've noticed and I've heard, and I talked to the community, I've talked to family members, I've talked to friends and colleagues from school and work, and I come to the conclusion that many students have not gotten sick, and when kids are in school, they are constantly getting sick. At the beginning of the school year, we supply tissues, Clorox wipes, and other cleaning stuff for the teachers to be cleaning the children's desks. And for all the years of my children have been in school, and now I have high schoolers, they've said maybe once or twice in their lifetime, have they been able to use those wipes and clean off desks? So I don't feel comfortable sending my children to school in this pandemic. As adults, I see people in the store now having their mask on and pulling it down and showing their nostrils, or they raise it up and they have their mouth showing where these are ways germs and the virus go into their systems. So what guarantees us that children will follow these new protocols? As for washing their hands, wearing their mask, and sanitizing their shoes when they go into the school? These are real issues." Next is Erin Christos. "If this meeting must be held virtually, how is it safe to open the schools?" Krittha Prabkaran. "Is there any options to do virtual classes for part of the time until COVID-19 situation improves?" Doreen Hebert. "Please give me the Board's definition of mask-wearing. I ask because my definition is that the nose and mouth are covered at all times with a mask. Yet I walk into a store and see masks around the neck, masks in a person's hand, masks only covering the mouth. Not one store has enforced approach to anyone in my presence. It's a 'don't offend anyone, let them be' policy. How will the school enforce mask-wearing, and will anyone be walking the halls, looking in classrooms, offices, etc., verifying masks are worn correctly? I appreciate this forum as a concerned parent. Thank you." Repeat comment. The next is Christie Brim. "Number one, how will it be handled when a student is sick in school? Will the class and/or school be shut down for how long? Two, if a student is called into school as sick or leaves school sick, does that student need a doctor's note detailing specific diagnosis to return to school? What if the doctor says it's just a virus? Three, what is the new visitor procedure? Will parents be allowed in the school to pick up their student if needed? Four, will students in elementary school continue to share lockers? For middle school, will the students still use lockers? Five, how will gym music, art, and recess be handled for middle schools and then for elementary schools? Six, will teachers have microphones so students can hear them? Seven, Darren Bailey received an order dated 7/2/20 stating Governor Pritzker exceeded his authority and any executive orders as of 4/8/20 are void. Masks are then not required, or a law and are recommendations. Will the school district leave the masking of students up to individual family decisions since it is not an executive order or law they be warrant? Eight, will students in middle school still be changing classes for each subject?" Next is Mark Stoner. "While I fully expect recess and joint lunches to be discontinued during the pandemic, it cannot be downplayed how important this kind of outside-of-the-classroom playtime is for young children's cognitive development. Could the Board please address how this will be handled? If it is to be canceled, and while I understand that this may add logistical complications, will the Board consider a plan to allow parents and guardians to pick up their children during the lunch and recess portion of the day and return them back to school afterwards if this is indeed the way the Board elects to proceed?" Jennifer Dahl. "Thank you so much for taking questions, and I do hope these are considered and addressed. In regards to masks, what will happen to children who are unable to tolerate masks for the day? Constantly touching their face because it's uncomfortable, itchy, creates anxiety, induces panic, feels constrictive, and breathing is affected. Will they be sent home? What happens if this is a daily occurrence or the child has subsequent episodes? What will happen if the child's grades are negatively impacted because they cannot focus because of the above possibilities and are being sent home? How are you going to address the impact this has on young children and their ability and need to social reference? This absolutely deserves discussion. Many children show reference on their face in situations as well as gaining reference from their teacher's face. How is a teacher supposed to reference a child's face during a lesson to make sure they understand? They cannot see a frown, a panicked look, a puzzled look, a worried look, an embarrassed face, a smile. Many children do not feel comfortable raising their hand to answer a question for fear of embarrassment when they do not understand something. Many teachers were able to see how a child is feeling just by reading their facial expressions. How will they be able to do that with a mask on? How will students read their teachers' faces and their lips for that matter as children learn from watching their teachers actively speak if they are masked? Well, we have the opportunity to have a virtual walkthrough of our school with our principals, so we will know, including the students, what they will experience while in the classroom and building. What happens when a child sneezes and needs to change their mask and they do not have another? Where does the mask go when they take it off for lunch? How do they keep it clean? Why is it okay for them to take their mask off to eat, but it's okay for them to have it on for the other six hours of school? Doesn't that defeat the purpose if they are all unmasked in the same room for lunch? They are all exposed to each other then, correct? Therefore, if it is at all being considered to have the children stay with the same group all day, why isn't it okay for them to be unmasked while in the classroom altogether for learning when they will be unmasked for lunch? In lieu of masks in the classroom, would there be an opportunity for a discussion in regards for the children to wear them upon entering the school in the hallways and when in the classroom have them off? Consider installing Plexiglas at their individual workstations if you need a barrier. Per the WHO, it is incredibly rare for an asymptomatic person to transmit the virus to another. Per the AAP, when developing policy regarding the use of cloth face coverings by students or staffs or school staff, school districts and health advisors should consider whether the use of cloth face coverings is developmentally appropriate and feasible and whether the policy can be instituted safely. If not developmentally feasible, which may be the case for younger students and cannot be done safely, the face covering makes masks wearers touch their face more than they otherwise would. Schools may choose not to require their use when physical distancing measures can be effectively implemented. If we have the opportunity to social distance, could this be considered? And what alternative buildings were you referencing in your questionnaire? I would absolutely urge you to look at the AAP COVID-19 Planning Considerations Guidance for School Reentry, which was released on 6/25/20 while planning our district's reentry. Thank you very much for taking the time to review these questions and concerns. I look forward to the meeting this Tuesday." Next is Steve Trotter. "District 15 and the Northeast Illinois region are currently in Phase 4 of Governor Pritzker's Restore Illinois Plan. During Phase 4, elementary schools will open with Illinois Department of Public Health-approved safety guidance. More recently, on June 23, the Illinois State Board of Education jointly with the Illinois Department of Public Health wrote the following guidance, quote, 'In-person instruction is strongly encouraged in Phase 4.' Furthermore, on June 25, the American Academy of Pediatrics wrote the following guidance, quote, 'The AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with the goal of having students physically present in school.' Next, on June 30, Dr. Fauci said during Senate testimony, quote, 'I feel very strongly we need to do whatever we can to get the children back to school.' Locally, Barrington Schools are offering students in-person learning in the fall. This is not by any means an exhaustive list of expert groups or individuals espousing the viewpoint that children are best suited for in-person learning and instruction, nor do my prior comments highlight the hardships many local families will face if students can't attend in-person school this fall. As such, I am asking that the school district plan include an option for full-time in-person, five-days-a-week student attendance this fall. Thank you for your time." Next is Brenda Oville. "If there is a shutdown or hybrid learning program next year, will there be options for students to complete their work and learning offline for students who do not handle e-learning well due to personality or learning styles?" Next is a repeat comment. Next is Hannah Katina. "I hope school in our district will be in-person. If school won't be in-person in 7th grade, there is many different classes and subjects. Will the students have to do Zoom classes for each subject each day? How will the students be graded?" Next is Adam Boulfer. "Good evening. Please consider students enrolled in the dual-language program as a special group to be able to attend four to five days if a hybrid model, three days remote, two days in-person is chosen. The immersion of the Spanish language is not something we can duplicate at home, and the limited contact minutes is a major cause for concern for their continued success in the program. Thank you." Next is Nikki Muller. "Members of the Board, what creative solutions have been considered when it comes to ensuring that the inclusiveness of teaching to the different levels of the returning students in the fall? It can be presumed that many students have done the minimum to keep up with online learning in the spring, while other students may not have had the means to even keep up with that, and last point of education was March 2020. While other students have families who have hired personal tutors to ensure they have not only mastered their grade level but are ready for new challenges. I understand that teachers typically have to teach to the average, but it seems the potential for disparity of learning levels among students in the same grade is much greater than ever before. It remains critical that students be able to be engaged, not bored and not overwhelmed in this new future where online learning may be part of the equation. Thank you for considering my question." Next is Michael Decrel. "I am extremely concerned about the safety of returning to school for the students and for the adults. The guidance all looks fine on paper, but the reality of managing a classroom full of young children to follow these guidelines every day, all the time, without exception, seems ridiculous. Telling our children to go to schools under these conditions, wear a mask all the time, stay in one room all the time, no special classes, etc., does not seem to be healthy or productive. I understand some want to return to normalcy, but we are not there. In my opinion, our energy would best be served focused on a distance learning solution that works for all, given the current circumstance." Nicole Mills. "My husband and I are hoping that school will be in session as regular as it may be for the coming school year. To have children at home to elearn is very difficult for a working parent to arrange, especially having already done so for the past month school was in session. Children need more than 2.5 hours per day of instruction. They need physical activity as well as mental stimulation that a school classroom setting provides. Many need the one-on-one attention that a certified teacher can provide, and for many students who are lacking digital resources or do not have access to homework help in the same home, this may prove even more difficult. As you move forward with your plans, please keep these as well as many other parent concerns in mind." James Fritz. "We are a two-working-parent household and rely on our public schools to provide a top education. The potential impact of a partial or no in-school session will have a catastrophic impact on my family financially and an even greater impact on my children mentally from lack of interaction and mental growth with their peers. The e-learning platform has been a failure, and yet another year of this would be a disservice to our children and our community who pays this hefty bill. As a parent, I would like the option to sign a waiver in order to have my child attend full-time at school. I am already aware of other schools in the state who are offering five-day-a-week session. I am back to work and in an office full-time, and it is time for our schools to do the same." Repeat comment. Next is Kim Merrill. "If a parent decides to do homeschooling, are the materials such as math books, science books, etc., going to be provided to the students to help eliminate excessive printing of materials? Wouldn't this be what the registration fee would cover? If homeschooling, will children and parents be doing this on their own schedule since parents might still be working? Of course, making sure the daily work is getting completed each day." Next is Josephine Skiba. "If masks cannot be tolerated at all, let alone for several hours a day, and it impacts the children's ability to learn, what will schools do? At this point, I am sure you have an idea what will a day in the life of school look like. We, as parents, would like a tour prior to registering our children. Will the material data sheet be available for all disinfectants that will be used throughout the day? What will gym recess and lunch look like? I will definitely continue to correspond with Ms. Heinz as well as the principals of the schools after this meeting. Thank you for your time." Next is Nick Tabak. "I was wondering if an optional remote learning, live streaming of a class is possible? This is a difficult time, and new information is coming out every day. I realize childcare is problematic for many. Keeping children spaced six feet apart in a classroom is next to impossible. Have you considered a livestream of the teachers' lessons an option? The children who need to be in school can do so, while the children who have home childcare can watch a livestream of the lessons. This would allow for smaller class sizes, and the spacing of children is less problematic. No one falls behind while still following all recommended guidelines. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing what you think." David Russ. "If schools open, what will determine if they need to shut down? Will closing be determined on a school-by-school basis, or if one needs to close, will all D-15 schools close?" Next is Jason Smith. "Is there a thought to postpone the start of school and end later? District 15 starts and ends early as opposed to other districts, counties, and states? If so, what are the flexibility options, start time, max days of the year, etc.? This would likely give me more time to see how trials go as well as observe curve status well after the 4th of July. Local and national outdoor camps have had to close recently due to COVID. With the likelihood that someone will test positive if we open as scheduled, what are all contingency plans?" Next is Jess Bedsole. "Recently, the American Academy of Pediatrics released their suggestions for reopening schools. I hope District 15 will be taking these considerations into account as the reopening plan is drafted. Some noteworthy takeaways include in-person instruction proving vital for social and emotional health of children, as well as the suggestion that elementary-age children may pose greater harm to themselves than others if required to mask due to the higher frequency of face-touching while adjusting their masks. While the AAP noted children are not super-spreaders of COVID, they also noted children are super-spreaders of other viruses, which cause greater harm and concern in the overall health of children. Returning to school full-time is the utmost priority, and I am hoping that District 15 will find a solution which includes elementary-age students returning to school without wearing masks in the classroom." Next is Joel Ramirez. And this is in Spanish, so I will have to share this with the Board once Renee translates it for me, and we will bring it back at the end. Next is Vitaly Shundrick. "In every classroom, please install wall-pluggable air sanitizers with indirect UVC light." Next is Susan Corb. "Probably the question most parents have is, will in-person in-the-school learning be happening in the fall, either every day or hybrid? And if hybrid, how many days at school? I would want my children to be..." I would want my children to be with the teachers in-person as much as possible. Thank you. This is Elizabeth. When making your decision about school plans for the fall and beyond, if there is a second wave, please consider families with two full-time working parents. Remote learning in the spring for our preschooler kindergarten or in second grader relied heavily on my and my husband's constant help. For my second grader in D-15, very little interaction was had with teacher or classmates, and the teacher simply provided lesson plans that we had to help my son figure out. My son was stressed all the time and did not learn much of anything. And my husband and I will not be able to hold both of our jobs if things are not different in the fall. It would, it would be much more helpful if teachers can actually do online instruction and if kids have a chance to interact virtually with their peers. This way, we'll help allow parents to work, teachers to teach, and kids to be less siloed, less frustrated, and more easily able to learn. Additionally, if there is a rotating schedule, it will be problematic for working parents to find the care they need when kids are not in school. Thank you. Curtis Markwart. As we have learned this year, worst-case scenarios can happen. My question is, what will the district's short- and long-term plan in regards to offering distance learning in ways that are both enriching and accessible to students? How might these technology investments and strategies be used in other ways besides COVID response? Will distance learning be a continuous option moving forward even beyond COVID? Next is Suprata Roy. I've been monitoring updates from nearby school districts. I feel it's irresponsible to assume we can go back to normal, norm, school every day with expectations that students will follow CDC requirements. While no alternate will satisfy everyone, we should keep the safety of our kids, teachers, and community as paramount and number-one priority. A hybrid model of two-days-on-site, three-days-remote with days-between for deep cleaning seems to be the optimal solution in my opinion. A full-at-school week even with a mask is a disaster waiting to happen and may cause shutdown and disruption within a short time. Remote learning may not work for everyone, but for those that work, there should be an option with appropriate execution unlike how we ended the school year. Lakshmi Kristum. Please give us an option of online learning. I am a pregnant mom and scared of sending my kid to school without any vaccine available. Give us the feasibility to decide an option every quarter and we will stick to the decision for that quarter. Please consider this request. Next is Kristen and Chris Cushing. To the D-15 Board and Dr. Heinz, thank you for accepting public comments. We realize this is a difficult situation for all of us to be in. Our main concerns for the school year are in-person education for our children. Children can have difficulty with online education for a variety of reasons, and both of our two children, who are very different from each other, did have difficulty at the end of last year. Online education is much more independent, and children with ADHD can be extremely distracted by online resources. They cannot be limited, and even children in the gifted program can have issues because of the independence required, more in the realm of not asking for help when it would otherwise be needed. On top of these learning issues, our kids were depressed. They said they wanted to go back to school, they needed to be with other kids, and learning from teachers in their, in-person. Mask concerns. We do have concerns for children wearing masks all day, especially considering the heat and health concerns of some students. One of our sons has intermittent asthma. The other tends to have a cold or allergies with a runny nose that lasts several weeks each year. Aside from individual concerns, if healthcare professionals note that extra stress and strain for masking up all day, how can we expect that of our children? My doctor and I noted that I experienced higher blood pressure on arriving to my recent appointment with my mask on compared to previous appointments and later on in the appointment after considerable resting time. What if that is a side effect for our kids? What additional health concerns might they face? We understand that the state has sent out its guidelines, and within the guidelines, it has stated that masks are mandatory. But please look into other resources as well in making this decision. I share another resource and other, and several other ideas on this below. Use of soap and water instead of hand sanitizers. Handwashing with soap and water is much preferred over hand sanitizer, some of which include hormone-altering ingredients such as triclosan and the very least are extremely drying. Hand sanitizer should be viewed as an option if no soap and water are available, but should not be used on a regular basis. Please have the children use soap and water. Recess time for decompression and fresh air. Regarding masks, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommend the following. The guidance for returning to in-person schooling includes recommendations about physical distancing, cleaning and disinfection, handwashing, and using outdoor spaces whenever possible. The AAP argues that offering elementary school children the opportunity to go to school every day should be given, consider, do, should be given due consideration over spacing guidelines if capacity is an issue. Schools should weigh the benefits of strict adherence to a six-feet spacing rule between students with the potential downside if remote learning is the only alternative. And it also argues that masks are probably not practical for children younger than middle school unless they can wear a mask without increased face touching. It may be helpful to consider the experiences of those who have gone before us, namely, schools that opened in other countries without masks and mostly without issues. Preschools that have stayed open or opened earlier without masks but use social distancing in classroom groups or pods that move about the school and stick together like a family. Using this concept, the classes can still have recess and even specials. In the survey you sent out, we liked the in-person option that also included online options for those who would prefer them. It seems to us there would be two choices for opening in that kind of combined scenario. One, no masks but with social distancing and handwashing with, with those who aren't comfortable with that working online. Or two, masks for in-person who don't want masks working online. However, to provide the least restrictive environment guidance that is used in an individual education plan for our children, we would need to consider, number one, we are aware that some teachers are uncomfortable with being in-person with students. Since there would be a need for teachers for those who prefer online, maybe teacher preferences be taken into consideration, placing them with the groups that fit their needs. Thank you for your consideration and work and best wishes with your decision-making. Please let us know if we can be of help or support. Okay, this is number 61. Danielle Holcomb. What options are there for parents and students whom part-time kindergarten interferes with work? Next is Diana Rushing. Are open teacher positions going to be filled for the upcoming year? Next is Brian. Curious as to the plans for incoming seventh graders for orientation of sorts, however that needs to look. Also, thanks for all of your hard work in getting this together. Nicole Zeke. Where, will there be a virtual learning option I can elect since my kids are in special education and my children and/or other children in the class may not be able to wear a mask? If my child must attend school, could my child be in class with another child that is not wearing a mask? Would I be notified this as a risk to my child and family? Edita Klima Skewa. While I don't usually comment on current events or political issues, I was shocked when I read the CDC guidelines for reopening schools in America. The guidelines that the Illinois State Board of Education has proposed for reopening of the upcoming school year are concerning. There are important items that need to be addressed, considered, and discussed to ensure the safety and health of our children. The first item of concern is the ineffectiveness of face masks as well as the possible harmful effects of prolonged mask wear. Quoting directly from the CDC website, "Members of general public wearing loose-fitting face masks rarely approach the necessary level of protection." For example, one study found that on average, 1% of the time that a surgical mask was put on resulted in adequate level of protection. This is not surprising as loose-fitting masks are not designed to seal tightly to the face, and this cannot prevent particles in the air from bypassing. Now, I cannot speak for other parents and their children, but seeing that child fondle their face masks about 25 times during a trip to the grocery store, I have little confidence that a cloth mask with already about 1% effectiveness will provide adequate protection. Another crucial item of consideration is carbon dioxide inhalation due to face mask wear. I have found that breathing in CO2, an odorless, colorless gas which is waste product made by your body, can be harmful to individuals at both low and high concentrations. According to the National Institutes of Health, inhaling high levels of carbon dioxide may be life-threatening. Hypercapnia can cause headache, vertigo, double vision, inability to concentrate, tinnitus, which is a hearing noise like a ringing or buzzing that's not caused by an outside source. Seizures or suffocation due to displacement of air. Although proper face mask wear has been found to only be about 1% effective, we would be ensuring that 100% of our children would be exposed to developing the health issues described above. Furthermore, the guidelines that have been outlined may not only have health and physical effects but may also have negative being effects. Under these guidelines, social distancing will be observed as much as possible. It is important to note that social and emotional development is crucial for our children. According to journal, social interaction in early childhood powerfully impacts children's positive attitudes and behaviors, academic performance, career path, and adult health outcomes. Although the virus is a health threat to our children and communities, I strongly believe that the emotional and mental effects on our children will be far greater than the virus itself. All of this is not to say that COVID-19 isn't a serious health concern and that there aren't steps that have to be taken to prevent virus spread. Extra sanitation, small groups and class sizes, staggered recess and lunch breaks are all things that can be practiced in order to prevent virus spread while still making children feel comfortable and safe. I agree that we need a solution. I think the current recommendations are damaging at best. I hope that we can band together to come up with something else, something better for our kids. Repeat comment, sorry. Wesley Neal. My wife and I believe school should be fully reopened in the fall. The e-learning program is not the same quality education my child would receive compared to an education received in a classroom environment. We understand there are elevated risks teaching kids in a classroom environment because of the current pandemic. However, we believe with proper precautions like using hand sanitizers, face masks, social distancing, taking temperatures at the beginning, middle, and end of the day, we can minimize the risk to our children. For those parents who are still uncomfortable about sending their children back to the classroom, we believe they should have the option to continue the e-learning until this pandemic is declared over by the state of Illinois. Finally, we understand the school district may be uncomfortable with the potential liability if a student contracts COVID-19 on school grounds, even though all reasonable precautions were taken. We believe all parents should be required to sign a waiver of liability before sending their children back into the classroom. So let's try to do it as the best interest of our children. Let's get them back into the classroom so they will be able to learn by interacting and socializing with their teachers and classmates once again. Next is Adam Bowsky. Health in my family are always my top priorities. Keeping them home is not ideal, but we'll do it if we, if needed based on school decisions and guidelines. I fully support the education system and can see impacts of losing in-person instruction. I hope you will put the kids' health and safety first and follow CDC guidelines. I hope to hear more on contingency plans as things will change weekly and monthly during the next school year. Eva Troy. I have many concerns regarding the new protocols being considered, the biggest of which are the forced social distancing and face mask requirement. I have spoke in depth with my children's pediatrician and neurodevelopment psychologist about these issues and their feedback was concerning. There has never been a study on the effects of long-term excess carbon dioxide on the developing brain and lungs because there isn't a doctor that irresponsible. The short-term effects are widely known and include drowsiness, headaches, lack of focus, low oxygen levels, to name a few. Then we have the cleanliness issue. School-aged children will be playing with them, pulling them down, etc. The buildup of moisture and improper use of the mask puts them at high risk of other respiratory infections. And let's face it, that's scary. This virus has a 99% survival rate, and the effect on children is no worse than the common cold. Forcing our children to social distance is as bad as the masks from a psychological and developmental standpoint. Everyone knows that proper social distancing is crucial, I'm sorry, proper socialization is crucial for our little ones. And for some, like my son with autism, it is a part of their IEP and private therapy. Socialization. All the hard-working gains we have made with socialization over the years are going to be wiped clean with these changes. Every teacher and child will be modeling the exact opposite of what we have worked and are still working to achieve. I love our school and the staff. I also understand that there are some who are very concerned about COVID, but since it is such a non-factor virus for children, extra cleaning, temperature checks, and hygiene protocols should be more than enough to resume school as normal. If some families want masks, that should be their decision, but equally, I should have the same right to choose for my child. I'm almost done in school versus distance learning. From the standpoint of a special-needs mom, distance learning equals no learning. Many of our children can't and won't sit for any online learning. We've tried during lockdown. The teachers were great, but expecting the parents to be a special education teacher, occupational therapist, and speech therapist is not feasible every day of distance learning and is a day of not achieving the goals in our legal contract, the IEP. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Deirdre Langgraf. I was wondering what constitutes an exception for a face mask due to a child's inability to remove and replace a face mask themselves? My daughter will be entering kindergarten and is unable to do so without excessively touching her face during said process. Next is a repeat comment. Next is Julia Awad. Please give us the choice between the remote learning and in-person for the coming school year since the vaccine is not yet available. We heard other districts will start in-person classes after winter break. Also, please consider the other countries who opened in-person classes and closed after a short period due to a spike in cases. Debbie and Bill Baggisson. We are new to Illinois. Before the pandemic, our daughter was experiencing the best therapeutic school year ever. She had finally begun to like school again. However, she was behind academically as well as socially. Without in-person instruction and the environmental supports, she is floundering. Her emotional health is suffering greatly. Our daughter needs her one-to-one instruction at her therapy school. The online instruction was too much for her. Our daughter's well-being is greatest while attending in-person school and not. Please include special-needs children into the all-day in-person instruction model. Next is Becca Baggett. Number one, what is your plan for teachers who are vulnerable, live with vulnerable people, or are in general uncomfortable returning to in-person school? If we opt out of in-person schooling when school starts, are we able to change our mind and enroll for in-person later in the year? Next is Christine Smith. I view the previous board meeting and was hoping to get more information regarding redistricting. While I realize that navigating a back-to-school plan during the pandemic is extremely important, I have some feedback that I have been holding on to for quite some time regarding redistricting. Last summer, I attended a board meeting that laid out the top 10 items that were considered by the task force while generating new boundaries. Two of the four proposed plans claimed to have met the 10 conditions, and one was said to meet nine of the conditions. However, I did not agree with this because one of the conditions was to prioritize that students attend their neighborhood schools whenever possible. This was not the case with Willow Bend. All Willow Bend students were be, were to be distributed between Central Road and Kimball Hill while a neighborhood west of Route 53 would pass by Central Road to attend Willow Bend. These students will then attend Plum Grove Junior High and then Fremont High School. Willow Bend is surrounded by a community of people who walk to the school for evening programs. Should their children attend schools that require transportation other than walking, this will take away access to school programming that occurs in the evening. Among other complications with location, this appears to be an equity issue. My family lives in Arlington Heights, attends District 15 and 214 schools, and since moving into our home in 2006, we have only ever received mailers from District 214 and District 59, a district that we do not attend. The families near Rolling Meadow schools who eventually attend Rolling Meadows High School often feel like a forgotten part of the district. Moving forward, I hope that the planning team will pay attention to location, access, and equity and consider the implications of redistricting for all of your stakeholders. Next is Keith Slavin. To whom it may concern, I would like to address the following issues. Clean air, handwashing, face masks, and temperature taking. First, what will be done in schools regarding clean, fresh air throughout the building? Secondly, we should encourage proper handwashing and not touch our faces instead of wearing a mask. Also, the face has a thermal receptor that senses heat and cold to regulate our temperature, and by blocking them can impact the body. A child wearing a mask throughout the day will only restrict them from oxygen, increase carbon dioxide that they will breathe back in. As a result, wearing a face mask for long periods of time can hinder the immune system and be susceptible to serious infection. Thirdly, enforcing any kind of rule like mask and temperature taking is against our constitutional rights. Next is Melanie Ken. If an instru, if instruction in Fall is virtual, will physical copies of some work be available for pickup? Some work is not as suitable for the Chromebook as kids don't know how to type much, so they draw the answer. Also, will there be actual live lessons with the teachers daily? Next is Ratul Sahah. Thank you for your collective efforts to make the school environment safe for our kids. Our utmost priority at the moment should be to protect the school and everyone, not only kids but teacher, staff, and parents from this deadly virus. We are seeing infections surging in many places, and people are not keeping proper measures as directed by health experts. As parents, we are obviously a little worried. As parents, we are obviously a little worried on how this will impact if school is open on a normal schedule. Kids, after all, might not be able to manage safety guidelines all the time. I am a proponent of continuing the distance learning mode and/or a hybrid mode with optional opt-out. This might support the kids whose parents can't afford to continue distance learning, as well as the kids with health concerns would like to continue learning from home. Amanda K. What will be the threshold in regards to number of positive COVID cases before the school shuts down? And will it be just that school or the entire district? Maryam Tanios. COVID-19 spread and infection is not something to be taken lightly. This is demonstrated in states that have reopened and suffered thousands of cases and deaths per day. As a result, no matter what decision is reached, a remote virtual option must remain open for families uncomfortable and unwilling to put their students as well as individuals in school building at risk. With that said, the quality of the online instruction must still be upheld. We understand the spring was unexpected and difficult to navigate. However, fall remote learning would have to engage the students more and provide them instruction comparable to the level of learning that otherwise would be achieved in person. Next is a repeat comment. Tom Schwartz. I would like the children to have the option to attend school physically with any e-learning, taking the form of video conference device in the classroom. Teachers should be given the option to physically attend the classroom or text remotely using some form of video conference device. At-risk students and teachers can then attend virtually and non-at-risk can attend actually. That way, there is one lesson plan for everyone in the class, including the teacher, and kids can actually attend. Next is Karen McHale. Will face shields be an option in lieu of face masks for younger children or children with sensory issues? And what precautions are being put into place for our teachers and staff as they are more likely to contract COVID-19? Are classroom teachers being assigned these tasks, to these task forces that will be making final determinations for what the upcoming school year will look like? Note, I understand if my questions will not be read during the meeting, if you will be covering these topics. It's kind of hard to come up with questions when we have so many and don't really know what to ask. I do not envy you at all for being in this position. I know you will try to do the best you can with the resources available. Thank you for your time. Next is Jennifer Figurelli. After reading the PowerPoint for tonight's meeting, can you further explain social distancing? Is that six feet apart, four feet, three feet? Will classrooms be set up minus removal of the additional furniture, just as they were in pre-COVID-19? Next is TJ. Given the BLM movement, what is the district doing to ensure that a curriculum celebrating diversity is being taught, regardless of whether it's in-person or online? Next is Karen. How can kids have frequent mask breaks throughout the day? How will we ensure cleanliness with masks not washed, dropped on the floor, et cetera? Next is Amy Young. There are many staff members who have school-aged children. If school is open full-time in fall, what is the plan if a staff member's child needs to self-quarantine due to exposure at school? Well, that staff member needs to report to the district that their child has been exposed, and will every kid who has been near that staff member need to self-quarantine? Will staff members need to take sick days if their own children are sent home due to exposure at school? And this is the last comment. Claudio Picar. What is District 15's driving principles in bringing our children back to school? Assumptions, triggers, and considerations in decision process? Will every, will school recovery return framework be open for input and comment? If Illinois resumes shelter in place, what enhancements and lessons learned will be considered to enhancement of our children's e-learning experience? How can parents and volunteers contribute and be part of the solution? So I will have that one comment that was submitted in Spanish be translated and we will bring that back as soon as I have that, but that is the end of our public comment.
Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, thanks.
A lot of reading.
That was a ton.
Yeah, that's a lot for one person. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am anticipating many of the questions. I know under normal circumstances, Dr. Heinz and I and some other members of the board would be answering some of the questions as we are coming through. Many of the things that were brought up will be addressed during Dr. Heinz's presentation. So I think our best bet would be to turn the meeting over to Lori and have her present. And then if there's anything outstanding at the end, we'll either hit it then or you will get some sort of a response from either Dr. Heinz or myself in the next few days.
Perfect. Thank you again, Morgan, for reading 90 comments. You did so in just about an hour, so good job. And thank you to everybody that sent in questions. It really illustrates the commitment within this community to help us think through how best to open the school, the 2020-2021 school year as safely, you know, as we can for our staff and for our students. I'd also like to thank the board for coming together in July. This board typically does not meet in July, but this topic was so important that everybody unanimously responded to my request to have a committee of the whole. We typically do regular Board of Education meetings where it is the board conducting their business in public. A committee of the whole has a somewhat of a different structure. It usually has one topic and it allows us to really listen, learn, and share ideas. And hopefully, coming out of this meeting for however many hours we're going to be on this call together, administration will have a great deal more clarity and hopefully some consensus in terms of what our board thinks we should do relative to the opening of the school year. So we have spent really since March deeply immersed in initially how to transition swiftly to distance learning. Distance learning, as I've said before, for those who have listened in to board meetings since March, was never intended to be a long-term instructional strategy. So we learned a lot as we were transitioning and changing our instructional methodology to get us through April and May until the end of the school year. My administrative team, the board, many of our teachers have been, and certainly union leadership, have been involved in a lot of reading, research, and discussion that has helped us construct the plan that I'm about to go over this evening. And as President Chupai said, many of the questions that were submitted and read so nicely by Morgan will definitely be addressed within the slide deck. And again, if any have not been, we will, one of us will follow up. So I will introduce you now to Karen Floor, who was on the screen, and now I see just her name. She is the District 15 nurse. And boy, has she been working double time with the rest of us trying to plan how best to safely open our school year next year. She and I will kind of be tag-teaming and toggling between the beginning set of slides, largely focusing on safety. And there will be other members of my administrative cabinet and leadership team that will be coming in and out of this slide deck as well to talk with you about some of the subgroup committee work that they have been engaged in and leading other administrators and staff through. In terms of the chat feature, board members, certainly you can, if you're comfortable, you can use the chat feature, or if you have something to say, you can either raise your hand, which will indicate, will, will let the speaker know that you have something that you'd like to say kind of in that moment or question. Otherwise, we're going to go through a long slide deck and you might not want to wait till the end. So I'm going to leave it up to each of you. If your question is really pertinent to the slide, please feel free to wave us down. We'll, we'll stop leading our presentation, allow you to ask a question or add something to what we're saying, and then we'll, we'll move back into the deck. Does that seem like a reasonable way to, to tackle this? And in terms of the, I think it was a gentleman that asked, why are we having this meeting virtually? The largest reason is that Walter R. Sunning is under significant construction, as are a number of our other schools. And we wanted to make sure that we could have a lot of public participation. And with 90-some comments, we wouldn't have had really probably enough space to have 90 or so folks in the gymnasium and still allow us to, to hear and to move us swiftly through 90 comments. So we made a decision, which we were allowed to make with some of the flexibility granted to us by the Open Meetings Act, while we're in, in COVID mode. So that was a decision that we made. And we think we're going to be just as effective doing it this way. And then hopefully Walter Sunning will be reopened for August and our first board meeting of the new school year will, will take place live there. All right, so without any further ado, Claire Qualcheck, my deputy, is going to go into presentation mode. And. Okay, Morgan, you are hostess with the mostest. It is, Claire's screen is saying that you disabled screen sharing.
My apologies. Try now.
No worries. Here comes. Okay. So here we are. This is a draft presentation of our return to learn plan for the upcoming school year. The executive summary is just there, and it really is the board memo that I sent with this packet that outlines the purpose of tonight's meeting, much of which I've already gone over. We will talk a significant amount about health and safety regulations and as they were informed by the Illinois Department of Public Health, the CDC, WHO, the World Health Organization, and the Illinois State Board of Education. We have done a significant amount of reading, researching, collaborating, planning, more reading, researching, and collaborating to put together options for the board to consider that we think will allow us to bring back 12,000 students, 2,000 employees, and to support the teaching and learning process in or across all seven of the municipalities in which we support. So if you can move to the next slide, and I'm going to kind of give you, this is my little hand motion. Everything that we're putting forth and that we've been talking about, you know, since this whole forced school closure started back in spring, really had to do with how best to safely educate every student every day. That is one of our commitments. Next slide, that was outlined in our strategic plan, which we put together at the beginning of the year. We want to make sure that we are ensuring academic, social, emotional, and personal growth of all learners. We agree with the Illinois Department of Public Health, the American Association of Pediatrics, Dr. Fauci, that nothing replaces face-to-face instruction. And it is our sincere hope that we really can get all of our students back into school as safely as possible to continue to provide a robust core experience, any intervention or enrichment supports, addressing social, emotional, mental health and wellness needs, as well as just ensuring that every learner is, is moving forward on that continuum. One of our other commitments had to do with our staff. We certainly want to make sure that our staff is safe and feels supported. Morgan and I conducted three focus groups today with wonderful staff members that really asked a lot of great questions and shared kind of their hopes and concerns. So they've played a very active role in this process because we want to make sure that they have the tools to do the hard work of being a teacher, but we also want to make sure that not only do they have the tools, but that they feel that we've put the proper layers of health and safety in place so they can do so. Our commitments haven't changed in terms of wanting to educate that whole child. And we know that with the forced school closures and the shift across the country to distance learning, that many of our students, despite the hard work of our teachers and administrators, lost to learning, that it's going to take time for them to recover. And we have methods in which we're working to ensure when we come back to school in whatever form that takes, that we will be able to continue to move kids through their grade-level curriculum, compacting as needed, providing those rich learning experiences, making sure they have interventions or enrichment acceleration opportunities. And one of our subcommittees will go much deeper into that. That second commitment there, as, as shown on the screen, really is the heart and soul of what we do and what we're most committed to trying to get back to when the school year is able to reopen in August, five short weeks from today. As we all know, we are currently in Phase Four, the revitalization phase of Restore Illinois. And we are making sure that we follow those guidelines in terms of what we're doing with Phase Four. Gatherings of 50 people or fewer are allowed. Again, the board meeting would have had more than 50 folks, so we, or we assumed it would. And that is one of the reasons again that we are here virtually. Schools and childcare are reopened and face coverings and social distancing are the norm. Additional guidance that came down beyond this from IDPH and Illinois Department or Illinois School or the Illinois State Board of Education further articulates what we need to do in this phase in terms of being a school system. So in order to get us to this point tonight, we have really and truly been working harder than we've ever really thought we would ever need to work. Many, many 15, 16, 18-hour days, nights, weekends. And we put together six task force groups, so little spin-off committees. One focusing largely on health and safety, which is at the top of everyone's mind right now, both for school and just, you know, moving through our world. The SEL and mental health needs of both staff and students. It's not just our students that we know are suffering socially and emotionally or, or from a wellness perspective as a result of, of living through a pandemic. So that's been a very active group. We'll hear from Laura Swanland. She will lead us through some of the work that her subcommittee has done. Learning loss, recovery, and acceleration, again, is the heart and soul of what school systems are about. So that is, we've had numerous meetings and we will continue to do so with administrative leadership and a lot of teacher participation in planning. I believe it's Robin Cook that will lead us through learning loss, recovery, and acceleration, although she's had many partners in that work. But she's going to be the driver of that subgroup update. Technology and distance learning in 2020. Thank goodness, the Board of Education approved the first-ever Director of Instructional Technology and Innovation this school year to start July 1. So she has really been thrust. Janice Mathis is on the call and will, will speak about what our plans are in terms of virtual learning cohorts and what distance learning will look like if we were to go backwards in terms of our phases and if we were to have to go back to a Phase Three where everybody was in a distance learning zone. Many improvements and enhancements, and certainly we've learned a lot of lessons from the emergency closure that we will build into how it will look different, differently and, and new and improved for, for staff and students. Workforce needs, that's our HR leader, Lisa Ness. She will talk with the board and give you an update in terms of what we've been focusing on in terms of planning and trying to put supports in place that will help our, our employees feel comfortable and confident returning to work. And lastly, peppered throughout this, this presentation, there are certainly financial implications. Our new CSBO, Diana McCluskey, although she doesn't have a deck, she may be called upon. She's in her probably third or fourth day with us. But if anybody has any questions about how we'll use our CARES dollars or other funding streams that we know we're going to need to tax a little to address some additional demands that educating students during a pandemic are requiring us to, to fund or to find finances for. So as some of our commenters referenced, the Illinois State Board of Education has provided guidance. And they've done so throughout the school closure, starting in the spring. But following Phase Four guidelines, which we'll include, and, and because we are an Illinois public school, we will adhere to these guidelines from the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education. They require the use of appropriate personal protective equipment or PPE, including face coverings for staff and for students. Now, that is not to say that some of our students with disabilities may need a different level of face covering or a different type. We'll talk about that at a later point. But staff and students will be wearing PPE. We did provide one per staff member. Student masks have been added to the supply list. Disposable masks will be available for those who show up at the bus stop and don't have one. They'll need to put a disposable mask on before they ride on the bus. If any visitors or parents were to come to school without a mask, we will have a stockpile of disposable masks as well for visitors or parents. And I know a few folks that participated in public comment were worrying about if masks were dropped or if they became dirty. We will have disposable masks available for students as well. And parents are certainly welcome to send additional masks with their students. We are prohibited from having more than 50 individuals in one gathering space. And, and you know, that is something that is a, a big stressor for schools everywhere because we have, some of our larger schools have close to 900 students. And many of them have more than 50 individuals in one space during lunch, sometimes during PE as multiple classes are participating. So that is something where we're, you know, planning around and, and making sure that we honor social distancing, and we're requiring social distancing to be observed as much as possible, the guidance said, because they realize that schools are really not designed for social distancing. We're the exact opposite of social distancing. We love to be together. That's what makes teaching and learning powerful. Kids working together in partners and small groups or as a whole class. So we are working with architects and members of our safety committee on how, how to best help students and staff socially distance, even though we're not constructed to do so. This fourth bullet will spend a significant amount of time talking to the board about, and Karen will certainly help guide some of the conversation. But one of the requirements has to do with conducting symptom screenings and temperature checks for employees and for students. And there's a language talking about self-certification, that there's symptoms. And there's a language talking about self-certification, that they're symptom-free in order to be at work or to be at school. And we are really trying to figure out what that's going to look like. So the 12-month employees that work over the summer are helping us test what that might look like for staff. And we're determining whether we will use a Google Form, whether we will use an app, or whether we will just use a paper process that each department supervisor will oversee for their employees. So that's under development. What will this look like in terms of parents and children as they send their kids to school? We're working with our legal counsel on what that might look like. If parents can self-certify that they've checked their child and that their child is symptom-free without any medicine or fever reducer and doesn't exhibit any of the identified symptoms through the CDC checklist. We're going to see if we can go that route, more of a passive sign-off. If you're putting your child on a bus in your car, letting them walk to school that you've checked. We will also be continuing to determine if there is an app that we can use. The issue that we face is that there are 12,000 students in our school. So how do you do that efficiently and effectively? So that is a point that we are still working to address since the revised guidance came out just a little over a week ago. And lastly, they are requiring an increase in school-wide cleaning and disinfection, disinfectant protocols. And we certainly are. We started doing that in the spring. And we have a lot of safety layers in place that I will go over momentarily. But again, from the guidance, if you could go back just a second, Dr. Qualcheck, all public and non-public schools in Illinois pre-K through 12 must follow these guidelines. These are not District 15 guidelines. These are guidelines that came down from the Illinois Department of Public Health in conjunction with the Illinois State Board of Education. Thank you. So scenarios for tonight, these are the five that we have really spent a lot of time thinking about. Obviously, the first scenario, we would be no choice but to go back to remote learning. It would be, you know, Remote Learning 2.0. It would certainly look and feel different differently than it did in the spring if we were to regress. So just part of the planning that we are working on right now is what levels of professional development do our staff need so they're ready if we swiftly have to go back into a shutdown the way we did in the spring. So we're going to talk with you at a later slide about how we'll use some of our time at Institute Day, both at the district level and at the building level Institute Days, helping staff, you know, really get ready to be able to pivot quickly should we need to. Scenario two, in-person instruction with, I feel like there should be a carrot there with significant health and safety modifications in place. We'll talk about what that will look like and the layers of health and safety modification that we've been thinking about and already put in place in many cases. Scenario three will be in-person instruction where you can opt out of in-person and your child or student would be sectioned into a virtual learning cohort or classroom. And we'll talk with you about, you know, what we think that that's going to look like. The fourth scenario is a blended or a hybrid experience, which would be a combination of in-person or in-virtual instruction. There are a few ways in which that could unfold that we will share with you. And lastly, it's the moment that we cannot wait to get to is when we are in phase five, we have a widely available treatment or and/or vaccine and schools are fully reopened. So we don't know, we don't think we'll be there in just five short weeks, but that is, you know, ultimately the moment that we're all dreaming of. So, next. All right. So instructional pathways under consideration. First one. We don't, I don't even know if we need to reiterate. This is just kind of me reiterating what I had just said. So let's go to the next one. In-person instruction with health and safety modifications. Here's the overview. And again, this is when I have a feeling you might want to wave hands and ask questions as I move through. Please feel comfortable doing so. Face coverings are mandatory for staff and students, you know, while they're in school. One has been purchased for staff. We've added it to the supply list. And we know that there are face coverings and special circumstances. Some of those special circumstances will have to do with our students that have an IEP or in some of our more restrictive special education programs. Just like any other IEP decision, those decisions will be made individually. That's what the I in IEP stands for, and a team will be, will come together. So the parents or guardians are part of that team, teachers and administrators. We will handle any special circumstances that have to do with our, any of our special education students will move through a process. And I would encourage, you know, any of our families that know or suspect that their child would fall into that special circumstance in terms of the requirement for face coverings to reach out to your school administrator to see about getting a meeting scheduled once the school year, once the school year begins, or Anne Scully, our new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. We've talked about disposable masks and additional PPE. So here we thought, we were so ahead of the game, we ordered face shields for all of our teachers and all of our program assistants, only to find out a few days ago that the Illinois State Board of Education, at the request of the Illinois Department of Public Health, said that face shields were not a one-to-one kind of equal substitute or not as safe as a mask, a properly fitted mask. There are times that we know that face shields might be subbed in or out. But every staff member, teacher and program assistant will have one. And we will identify when those times would be appropriate for a face shield to be used. But they have been purchased for our staff because we do see opportunities to use them perhaps during guided reading. If the students are masked and there's a level of social distancing between the students and the teacher or with some of our students that have special needs. Additional types of masks that were purchased for some of our students that have speech and language IEPs or some of our students that are in our deaf and hard-of-hearing program, they really need to see the mouths of their teachers. So we have ordered masks that have clear panels that will allow for that. So that is another resource that has been ordered and will be available as needed by guidance within the IEP. No gatherings of 50 or more in one space will be allowed. And that is, that is no small task again in a school. And that's social distancing and the language to the greatest extent possible. So we know that, you know, with having a mask on and being six feet apart, those are two great ways in which we can spread fewer germs or reduce the number of germs that we're spreading. The problem is, is our schools are going to are not built to socially distance. So we're trying to put in other layers of safety and spread desks and students out in classrooms to the greatest extent possible. We'll talk a little bit about our architecture firm and how they're helping us come up with creative ways to do that. One of the things that we've seen in guidance, other state plans, and certainly in conversations that I've had with local superintendents, students stay and teachers transition to the greatest extent possible. You know, that is really something that you will see on a number of slides and has really been becoming a little mini mantra that we're using when we try to plan how we're going to limit movement to the greatest extent that we can during the school year. So let's go to the next one. Karen Floor, would you like to talk about symptom checks, symptom and temperature checks and self-certification any further?
So we're going to follow the CDC symptom checklist as well as a temperature check for...
Karen, would you mind turning up your volume? I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Hey Lori, can I jump in for just a second? Before we go on to symptom checks, can I just go back to the mask for just a second? As you've heard in some of the public comment, there are adults who don't believe in effectiveness of masks. And as kids come to school and they say that I am uncomfortable, and these are children who do not have an IEP, who are, who by all means could feasibly wear a mask. What is the district going to do in order to ensure that every child is safe and compliant?
Masks are required, and we will make sure that parents know that and that students know that. We are working, and Laura Swanland will talk at a later time about some of the PBIS cool tools and that we will be putting together. We've talked about also putting some videos together about how to take a mask on, how to take a mask off, why masks are important. For those that don't believe in masks, it is one of the reasons that one of our offerings or one of our scenarios is a virtual environment. So for those that ultimately don't believe in masks or don't believe they're necessary or don't believe that their child can manage a mask for, again, a variety of different reasons, that is why we think that a viable option would be distance learning. But the guidance from the Illinois Department of Public Health is that we will be required to wear masks when we're in school. So that is, that is the stance that we will follow, that guidance. It's not, it's not going to be easy, but that we will, we will comply with the guidance.
Thank you.
Karen?
Yes.
Back to you.
Can you hear me better?
Little bit.
Little bit. Let me try some more.
Use your recess voice.
My recess voice? Okay. I'll do my best. How's that? Is that better?
That's actually...
Okay. So we're going to follow the CDC symptom list as well as a daily temperature check. We're going to ask that all staff verify that they are symptom-free prior to the beginning of school day. We will have additional thermometers in offices and in other areas so that if anyone needs a temperature check throughout the day or any visitors or someone coming to the school building, we'll be able to do that as well. We are looking at how to do that with students and with staff. We are definitely trialing that this summer with our 12-month employees. We are looking at identifying isolation spaces in all of the facilities for individuals that may come down with COVID symptoms during the day. So throughout the buildings, there will be the health office where the students typically used to go for care throughout the day, whether it be an illness, an injury, or other medical treatment. That area will still be open, but we will also provide a secondary area for isolation. Those spaces will be for students or staff that develop symptoms during the day to stay there until they're able to go home. We will be hiring additional aides to help the nurses so that area can be supervised. And the nurses are also undergoing John Hopkins contact tracing training currently. We will be reaching out to anyone with a positive COVID test and contacting anybody else that was exposed. So the plan is to have students stay in small groups so that we won't have to shut down schools. We can maybe just self-quarantine a classroom instead of a school. So our goal is to have as much in-person learning take place as possible. Next slide, please.
I just want to piggyback, if I may, on the self-quarantine. Several of our folks that commented were wondering if a whole school or a classroom would close. The guidance really does recommend that only necessary classrooms close, not full schools or whole districts if there is a positive test, whether it be a staff member or a student or a family member of a student, which is part of the reason that that students stay, teachers transition mantra is so much more, so much so important from a contact tracing perspective. If we let middle schoolers or junior hires loose and they have a passing period every 42 minutes and they're mixing in, you know, large groups every period of a nine-period day, contact tracing becomes much more difficult and potentially increases the likelihood that we would have more school, full school shutdowns. So that is part of the recommendation from the guidance that to the greatest extent possible, we keep kids in cohorts or pods. A lot of people are using the word pods. All right. So in terms of school-wide cleaning and disinfection, Van Lee, our custodial supervisor, as well as our new Director of Facilities and Operations and our new Assistant Director of Custodial Services and Maintenance have really been focusing on this. They've been on the job about three weeks, Van, probably 30-plus years. But we have a lot of cleaning supplies that he's ordered, you know, over the years, but also a significant number of new supplies. We do use the Virex wipes that I, that are everywhere across the district. They are COVID compliant. So somebody asked if we have a list of cleaning supplies that we use, and we certainly can put that together. But we will follow all CDC and OSHA guidelines in terms of extensive cleaning, you know, for all spaces. We put a protocol in place before the closure when COVID was kind of really starting to take hold in the Illinois area. We've only enhanced that protocol now that we know more about the virus and we have layered safety protocols in place. We will certainly move away from what we would typically do, which would be a one-fifth cleaning. So each day we clean a certain portion of the building very deeply. And by the end of the week, the whole building has been deep cleaned and then we start that process over again. That's a typical protocol in schools during these COVID times. We'll have increased daily cleaning procedures over high-touch surfaces and classrooms. Additionally, we've purchased misters that really are going to allow our custodial staff to really hit large areas within the school much more swiftly than that deep cleaning. So we feel as though the deep cleaning protocol where you're touching high-touch surfaces as well as the mister is really going to kind of be a one-two punch in terms of layering cleaning procedures in place. Any area with a school or district facility where there's been a sick person, guidance has been identified, provided for us in terms of what we have to do to close down the space, clean it, and then when we would be allowed to open that space up again. So that will be built into our protocol. We've talked about bulk supplies. We have put plexiglass barriers in place here at the ESC. At the reception area, if you were to come in, some of the secretarial stations have them. Some of our folks that work in cubicles have them at the ESC. We've done the same thing at the schools in terms of greeting counters and where our secretaries are working to just add another barrier. And plexiglass, my goodness, it's everywhere. You know, as you move through restaurants and stores these days, our schools will have plexi in the areas that we've identified as really needing them. Social distancing signage was put up in the spring as well as handwashing reminders and how-tos. We have a significant amount of additional signage that's been sent to us from the Illinois Department of Public Health. Kathy Appen Reprographics, who does all about copying for the district, will be busy this summer making sure that we have all the appropriate signs available for the schools to hang out and hang up. And we'll identify places that we want to see that signage. Karen, would you like to go through the quarantine procedures, please?
Absolutely. I also wanted to mention that every school does have a nurse and will have a health aide. So there will be plenty of health staff available to meet the needs of both staff and students. For quarantine, it's necessary to keep anyone that might have been exposed or might have symptoms from others. The Illinois State Board of Education and Illinois Department of Public Health mandate that any individual who comes in close contact with someone who tests positive for COVID must self-quarantine for 14 days. So that's where our contact tracing is going to come in very important for us to be able to reach out to people who test positive and to find out if there are family members in the home that test positive. That way we can keep the spread of the virus down because if this virus does spread, we may end up going back to stage three and closing down the school. So they define as anyone who's closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes without a mask. And this is why wearing a mask is vital for our students. If the students don't have a mask, they are then considered a close contact and then need to go into quarantine for two weeks. And that's something we're trying to avoid. So when the kids can be six feet apart, can be outside and can have movement, by all means, they should have mask breaks. Then we'll be able to remove the masks safely. But we want to make sure that the kids are in school as much as possible. So that will require them wearing their masks as well. If classrooms are required to quarantine due to a positive test, the entire classroom or the entire pod will transition to remote learning during the quarantine period. So the teacher and the students will just switch over to the virtual learning. Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health don't require a complete school closure, which is why we're developing the pod system, the system of cohorts of small groups of students who are together so that if we do have an exposure, we're not closing the entire building. We're going to do what we can to keep the buildings open. But we are working with the Illinois Department of Public Health and following the guidelines of our governing bodies.
The last, yeah, go ahead.
Additionally, if students, when students are riding the bus, if they're on the same bus and they are exposed because they don't have a mask, they would also need to move into the quarantine time as well. Thank you, Dr. Hines.
All right. Some of our special education programs, as the board knows.
I apologize for interrupting. Can I go back to what you had talked about in terms of, Karen, what you talked about in terms of quarantine? So is there a thought to the threshold to determining whether or not we've had an outbreak versus exposure? Determining whether or not we have to just close down classrooms versus the entire school?
Wendy, that's a great question. That's not determined by us. That's determined by the Illinois Department of Public Health. So we will more than likely be in communication with them multiple times throughout the day, giving them reports of positive COVID testing. And they will determine for us when we close down the school. We will do what we have to do for quarantine, but we hopefully won't have to close down any schools.
And are we partnering with our healthcare facilities, our local healthcare facilities for that? And are we partnering with our healthcare facilities, our local healthcare facilities for that positive COVID testing?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. Are we partnering for testing, or are we partnering with results from testing?
Are we, it's both. In terms of positive COVID testing, or even symptomatic individuals, whether that's staff or that's students, do we have a partner with a local healthcare organization that will assist us with COVID testing?
I am meeting with a representative from the Northwest Community Hospital tomorrow, actually. And we're going to discuss what resources are available in local, because right now, Rolling Meadows High School is a testing site, but my guess is that it will not be a testing site once school begins. So we'll need to find out where those testing sites will be as they change. Everything is changing so quickly. So we're working, we're working as diligently as we can to try to make sure we have those resources up to date.
We will also talk about putting a list together for staff and families of those sites once the school year begins, because to Karen's point, they're taking up a lot of real estate in the Rolling Meadows High School parking lot right now that the school will need to probably take back when students start driving their cars to school. So we will, we will certainly work with Northwest Community and put a list of resources available for staff in the community to just make it easy on them. One less thing they have to worry about when they need to go get a test is to try to figure out where they're available locally. So we'll, we'll keep an updated list for our staff and community.
I have one question with regards to, I think it was when it was getting to this with their questions too, is does the state of Illinois, I know they're trying to set up contact tracing and such, is the state of Illinois going to report people that have, I guess, tested positive for COVID-19 to school districts where their children are known to be, something like that? I'm just curious how they're going to work.
Not to my knowledge, I've not heard that they will be reporting, you know, out to us in any ways. And I've heard mixed response in terms of whether they are even going to need to be notified if we have positive cases in any of our, you know, local school districts. Karen, have you heard anything different than that?
So the, so the state, the Illinois Department of Public Health are the ones that collect the test results, and they cannot provide that information to us because that is HIPAA-protected. So we're going to, we're going to need to count on our families to report to us when there is a positive case in the household. That way, we can make sure that we keep our cases very low. But no, they will not be, and we will only be contact tracing within the district. So if we come up with some, some potentially exposed people that are not school, are not students or families of students, we will not be reaching out to grandparents and uncles and neighbors, just staff and student families.
Quick question, Frank, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right, I just, so just, do we have, will we have capabilities in the school to take like a COVID test?
We will not, we will not have that capability, no.
Okay, moving on to health and safety of some of our student populations, our special education students. Some of them have 504 plans, some of them have individualized IEPs. Again, as I said earlier, decisions will be made on an individual basis by a team, and IEPs that we have in place, or 504s that we have in place, may need to be adjusted now that we are in phase four of the COVID-19 pandemic. So we will monitor that process and assist staff and students and families in revising those IEP goals and procedures and making sure that they have the proper supports to deliver everything that we've, we've put into the IEP in terms of their educational goals. We are going to be seeking doctor verification for face-covering accommodations that might be needed or that people would like to have added to IEPs or 504s. So there will be a doctor verification component. The special education department is creating a plan for IEP-specific loss and recovery services. So that is something that, again, will, will flow through student services and will be very individualized based on student needs. The instructional special education and preschool classrooms, you know, we know are going to look differently than some of our junior highs. So social distancing will be adapted and modified in some of our special ed classrooms, and certainly with our youngest learners, our preschool learners. We want to follow the guidelines, but be mindful of, you know, that some of our students are as little as three years old. So we will be making age-appropriate as well as, you know, safety decisions to come, not only to comply, but to just do what's right by our youngest learners. We will certainly do a lot more disinfecting and hand-washing practices with some of our youngsters who may have a harder time keeping their hands to themselves and keeping their masks on. The good thing about those classrooms is that they have a much higher student, teacher-to-student ratio. So there will be more adults that will be helping the younger students make sure that they're, they're following as many of the safety outlines and recommendations as possible. You know, our focus is absolutely going to be, you know, the mitigation of risk. It's paramount for staff and students. We can't, no matter how hard we try, eliminate all risk, but our goal is to just layer as many different protocols and procedures in place to mitigate the risk to the greatest extent we can. The needs of our medically fragile students are being discussed both at the school level, at the district level, and when schools resume at the team level. And we are, as I said a little while ago, investigating additional PPE needs that might be required to support some of our younger students or some of our more medically fragile students. In addition to our special education students, there will be some special considerations that we will continue to flush out to support our EL learners, our English learners. Pull-out services for large groups of ESL and bilingual resources students are currently under review, which means they wouldn't necessarily be able to stay in their cohort or their classroom because their service is delivered on a pull-out basis. So we need to figure out how we're going to deliver the sources, the services that are needed and still try not to have too many kids moving and mixing in and out of classrooms and into different cohort groups of students. So our assistant superintendent for multilingual programs, Renee Urbansky, and her team are working on what that might look like. Integrating specials for our bilingual self-contained classrooms is also under review because many of our bilingual self-contained students, although they learn together with their other bilingual classmates, they're integrated into specials to have strong monolingual or English language models. And much like moving kids out for pull-out service, we would be introducing a variety of different students into other classroom cohorts, so we need to figure out how to solve for that. Again, our goal is to keep those students together, students stay, teachers transition to the greatest extent possible. So I have every confidence that Renee will figure out that puzzle. All right, next, general operations for in-person instruction. Our architects, STR, have, I asked them to do some classroom capacity work to determine how we can maximize available space within our classrooms, because unless somebody could build a bunch of additions onto our 20 schools and magically wave a wand that would allow me to hire hundreds of extra folks, we are not really going to be able to keep a six-foot distance in every classroom. That would be really meaning that we would put around 12 to 13 kids in a typical classroom. And our board targets are much larger than that. So what most school systems are doing is we're looking at the classroom spaces that we have. What are the seating configurations that will allow for the most maximum allowable space in between students? In most cases, or if not all, they're recommending that desks face the same direction, and any nonessential furniture should be removed from classrooms. Again, with that mantra of students stay, teachers transition to minimize student movement. So the architects will be working and finishing up their work within the next week to make scenario recommendations for every school. It'll look a little different because all of our schools were constructed at different times. Their classrooms are different sizes across the buildings, and even within the buildings, rooms are different sizes, and they have different points of orientation for direct instruction. So this will be a puzzle that our principals will help lead, and certainly our classroom teachers that were on our focus group calls today were interested in finding out when they could get into their room to start removing some nonessential furniture and kind of rethinking room setup. So within the next couple of weeks, we will really start to mobilize the change in those classrooms and the removal of some significant amounts of furniture, and in some cases, some beloved pieces of furniture that we just simply don't have room to keep in the room during this time. So I'm not going to spend too much time on PBIS cool tools, but just know that in terms of classroom layouts and shared spaces, we will be creating a number of new cool tools. And for those of you that don't know what a cool tool is, it's a tool that our schools use to explicitly teach expectations and those how-tos within a building, how to move through the hall, how do we behave at lunch, how do we ask for help? We're creating a significant list of current cool tools that might need to be modified based on COVID and some new ones. So this is a list of a few. Hand-washing, scheduling bathroom breaks, one-way hallways, and increased signage, like you see at the grocery store, and entrance and exit routines that are going to have to be restructured to eliminate hundreds of kids kind of trying to squeeze through a set number of doors the way they would typically do at the beginning or the end of the day. And another thing in terms of shared spaces and classroom layouts, the notion of the communal supply, a lot of our schools have cute little areas where kids can put all their markers and scissors, and everybody can kind of just grab them and share them. Everybody will need to keep their supplies, you know, in, on their desk or in their little school box, and we're not going to be sharing supplies. Restroom procedures, we're certainly going to revisit those, but the goal will be to limit the number of students in restrooms at one time. The recommendations and the guidance, and just through a number of different webinars that I've been listening to, is really recommending that we schedule class trips. A lot of our teachers of younger students will do that. This will likely become a practice that we'll put in place with some of the older folks. So we don't have large numbers of students convening on the same restroom and that there's some teacher sort of supervision to make sure that kids are getting in, taking care of business, washing their hands, and getting out. So that, that is something that we're developing. Hallways, we will certainly limit, will be placed on the number of students that can be in the hallways. And even at the junior high, that's one of the reasons that we're taking a look at passing periods. And if our junior high students will, will have an experience that more closely mirrors what the K3 kids experience in terms of staying with a homeroom teacher for the, for the vast majority of their day. Our principals had most of their schedules finished, and they're now reworking their schedules to see at the junior high, if we schedule students into their math class, to what extent can they then stay together to receive their core instruction? And then what would it look like if we allowed them to, to receive things like foreign language and go to a band lesson? How would we, what would that look like? How many kids would be leaving their, their classroom cohort and moving into another cohort? And then what would that do to, to the flow of students and to exposure? So our junior high principals are working hard to, to rework the schedules. Drinking fountains, I know somebody asked about it. Right now, we're wrapped, they're, they're closed. We are going to encourage parents to send a water bottle or two to school. We do intend to buy small water bottles in case kids are with, come without a water bottle, or if they're just extra thirsty and they drink up the water that their parents send them or their guardians send them, we'll have classroom supplies of water available to our students. Use of lockers will be suspended. Lockers are so close together, and we don't have, again, an extra six or 700 lockers to spread kids out. Some of our schools, actually, kids are sharing lockers right now, so that certainly can happen. So lockers will be suspended, kids will carry their materials with them. A lot of our junior high kids do that, believe it or not, because they're worried that they're not going to make it from one class to the next, and they don't want to stop at the locker. So no use of lockers. We, believe it or not, are inventorying how many classrooms have tables versus desks, and we're going to see if we have desks available in storage that we can reintroduce and swap out from those tables to, you know, give each kid a very specific space that is, that is theirs throughout the day. So that is part of the work of the architects, but also part of the work of our principals, as well as our custodial staff. And then capacity limits for shared spaces are certainly going to be, are being looked at. But in some cases, for example, our gyms would have more than 50 students in them because there's multiple classes in the gym space at one time. So we're trying to figure out how we will redistribute some of those students to adhere to the capacity guidelines. While the weather is nice, we're going to encourage everybody to get outside as frequently as they can if we have a rainy weather day or when it, you know, for still here without a phase-five allocation, if you will, or what will we do in the winter for PE? Our PE department, I believe, they've already met on their own. I believe we have a meeting on the books for tomorrow or Thursday to start to talk about what PE is going to look like and what modifications might need to be made to the curriculum to allow kids to have, you know, PE as a regular part of their day, because we, we know they need that movement break. It's, it's good mind and body, and we want to make sure that we can allow it. All right, what else? For transportation, we transport over 10,000 students on roughly 150 buses every year. Before the school mandatory school closure, we had already put enhanced bus cleaning procedures in place, and they're going to continue, and they're actually, actually going to be increased. So we will require windows to be opened. The buses have vents on the roof that will be open with flaps facing forward and backwards. We are going to outsource a deep cleaning of the buses where they will take each bus apart, clean it, reassemble it, and they will be cleaned in between routes and at the end of the day, and then just close down to allow the deep cleaning, you know, to kind of really settle in, if you will. Recommendations from the Illinois Transportation Association are saying that a 50, 50 rider maximum is, would be the guidelines, and that would include a driver and a bus aide if one would be, need to be assigned to the bus. That, as you can imagine, is, you know, going to cause us to really feel the pinch in terms of how we're going to transport 10,000 students, because our largest buses are 71-seaters, and if we're going to have 20 or 25 fewer students, we don't know if we're going to be able to run the same routes that we are right now. And we have an early start and we have a late start route. We have what's called a two-tiered hybrid. So what Tom Bramley, the director of transportation, is taking a look at, he's re-examining capacities, he's seeing what could happen. Can we get everybody that we need to get to school with the same two-tiered system? We do not believe that we can. So he is investigating a three-tiered system, which would mean you would have an early bus route, you'd have a mid route or a second tier, and then you'd have a third, a third tier. So what that will mean is that we will be able to put fewer children on the bus to allow for greater social distancing, but that we are going to have to change start times. And we know the collective groan of everyone listening in and that will review these notes, it's not going to, to be easy, and it will definitely, you know, impact our families that are, that are working and that require the bus to get their kids to school so they can get off to work. But we really don't see any other way to transport everybody that we need to, unless we don't allow paid transportation, which is something that we might not be able to do this year. And depending on the number of parents that will be able to say to us, even though the bus is, is convenience and we need it, it helps us as working parents get our children to school, we will, for this upcoming year, waive the need for transportation. So those are all the things that we are looking into at this time. Students will be able, will be required to wear masks or their PPE on the bus, because again, 50 kids on a bus is going to be about two kids per seat. So depending on the size of the kids, if you're a younger child, you know, somebody at the window, somebody at the aisle, there's a little bit of distance between you, but it's why the PPE is going to be so critical on the bus. We are going to require siblings to sit together on the bus and to potentially have assigned seats on the bus in terms of, again, being able to see who was in close proximity if somebody were to take their mask off and something were to turn positive. So there's a possibility that we'll do some, a level of assigned seating on the bus as well. So transportation is still a work in progress, but it's a very big puzzle in a district that transports over 10,000 students every day. Specials, oh boy, this is, you know, we know that kids love reading and writing and science and social studies, but what they love more is, you know, sometimes is P art, music, library. A lot of this is under development. We have a number of teacher work groups working with the Department of Instruction or the Department of Teaching and Learning this summer to come up with, to take a look at their curriculum and to figure out what modifications might be needed to the curriculum. And we are really looking to their lead organizations to see what guidance they are providing. In the slide deck, you can see some of those lead organizations that are helping to inform some of the decision-making that we are trying to put in place. that we are, are, are trying to put in place. We want to offer PE, again, as I said a moment ago, outdoors to the greatest extent possible. We might see if there are alternate spaces within the building that we could have some of our PE classes. And in terms of junior high locker rooms, they will be off limits and students will not be changing for PE. If there are any junior high kids listening, I'm sure they're all cheering, because no one really likes their junior high PE uniform. But, but they will participate in PE in their street clothes, the way their K six, you know, counterparts do. Art, there might be a need to do art on the cart. Again, students stay, teachers transition to reduce the number of students moving in and out of spaces, easier for contract tracing. So a number of art teachers were on our focus group today. They had some great ideas in terms of how we can work to modify the art curriculum and still allow kids to have that rich art experience. So that will be another subgroup that will work with the Department of Instruction. General music, teachers might deliver the music curriculum in homerooms, the same way the art teachers will. The safety of singing and curricular alternatives are certainly under review. Singing, this is an aerosolized saliva spread, it's spread through the aerosolization of saliva. When you sing, the, the particles that are released are, are greater. So we have to figure out how to safely engage in general music. So a lot of passion from, again, all of these special area teachers. But certainly within the music group, we will look to their key organization listed here for safety suggestions. And some of what the curriculum requires beyond singing is musical instruments, art appreciation, music appreciation. So there will be a variety of ways that we can deliver music. It just might not be exactly as it's been done in the past. And the same thing with the library media center. We have reached out to the Palatine Public Library to see what groups they're looking at and referencing in terms of how they're going to open the library, manage visitors and manage the collection, cleaning and then redistribution of books and other materials that they check out. So that the library media group will be working and we will be doing our best to make sure that at the very least that, you know, the kids have a have a story and a library lesson and then we're, we're still a TBD on how, how will we check out, return and, and, and clean materials? Whether they're just left for three days, because then the, the disease is believed if, if there were, was any COVID, if you will, on the books. If you leave them for three days, they can no longer live, or if we're going to clean them or whatnot, that's kind of under development. Lisa has a question.
Yeah, I've got a quick question, Lori. Something that came in from somebody watching. The question was about reconsideration of the third tier of busing, going back to the transportation topic. If it turns out that we have a large number of students that choose to opt for virtual only, will that be an opportunity to reconsider that and potentially stick with the two-tier?
Yes.
That we've currently got, or is it a done deal?
No, no, not a done deal. So let's say that the two options that we run with would be in face and opt out. Okay, or hybrid and opt out. What are the questions we'll need? We'll need parents to say, I'm going with this option or that option. Then we're, another question that the parents will have to answer will be, I need transportation, I don't need transportation, or I'm willing to waive, I need it, but I'm willing to waive it. And then we really have to take a look at our numbers to see how many children might want to be sectioned into a virtual classroom. What will that do to their, the in-person enrollment numbers? And then what will it do to our transportation numbers?
Right. And it's another good point. If, if we have a lot of parents that choose to transport their students as opposed to utilizing the transportation that's available to them, that changes that dynamic also.
And some parents, if they can, will just, they will feel more comfortable not having their child on a bus, because there will be up to fifty kids. Well, probably forty-nine kids and a bus driver or forty-eight if we have an aide. And some people might not like the fact that that means there'll be two to a seat. So that could happen too. Yep. Every decision causes a, is, is, it causes a little domino effect, but.
Yeah.
I have a question about that domino effect. So if we, if we are having parents choose, you know, to opt, if we go with that option where they have the option to opt out, is that something that sticks for the rest of the school year? Or will there be chances? Are there sort of like checkpoints to reconsider? Or how might that, if their decision changes one way or the other?
How we have it now stated on another slide, Sam, is that it would be for the year and, or until phase five. But that, that could certainly be, you know, a decision point that we could look at quarterly. The issue then is if kids are coming off of virtual, then we're putting them into an already established classroom.
Yep.
And that in and out and the disruption, the potential disruption. That's not to say that we don't have kids that move in and, and we assimilate them into a classroom. But I think at this point, we're thinking you're making a year-long decision, or we'll push everybody back into a, a classroom if we got to a phase five.
Okay.
But that's, none of this is a hundred percent in stone, but that's what we're thinking at this point. Lunchroom, yeah, also we serve thousands and thousands of breakfast and lunch, you know, every day. So Kristin Voight in Nutrition Services will be doing grab and go lunches for our students. They will be delivered to classrooms and students will eat in the classroom. The food allergy policy is under review. Karen Flora was on a call with some of the parents that helped to develop the food allergy policy. I was able to join the call for a short time last week. Karen, do you have anything to add about food in classrooms and that procedure at this point? Because I know it is a, a point of concern for parents that have children with, you know, food allergies.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing that, Dr. Hines. We will be adding a COVID section to our food allergy policy since we're changing what we're doing in the classrooms. Were you able to hear me this time?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Recess, you know, we certainly want kids to get outside. They need movement breaks. If they can, we want to get them outside. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but we know that no more than fifty students can congregate in any one area. So much like active supervision where supervisors are assigned to different zones to supervise the children in certain areas. The likelihood that we'll rotate kids through, in classrooms through play areas will really help us keep the numbers down. The principals, they know their spaces. They know some of the schools have kids in the front, on the side, in the back. They, they will be instrumental in identifying those places that kids can safely play and enjoy some fresh air and time together. But that's going to look different at every school. That's why it's under development. We need to figure out students with, and how they're going to wash their hands. Are they going to wash their hands? Are they going to use a, some hand sanitizer to go out to, are they going to be able to use playground equipment? And if so, then how do we wash it in between recess periods? So we are reviewing and, and we'll put some protocols, safety protocols in place around recess and the sharing of equipment. Face coverings are not required outside if you're able to maintain six feet of social distancing. So that will be our target. So again, especially for those that have concerns about masks and, and the ability to take them off at times. This would be one of those times. So we will put up probably a cool tool together about what that will look like. Active supervision on the, the part of the adults and, and just hopefully kids, you know, working to follow the rules will help kids have a safe recess experience. We're contemplating whether or not, I don't know if a month or so ago you saw on the trip around Chicago, those distancing circles were painted on grassy areas, so people could see how far apart six feet actually was outside. We're contemplating whether or not we might want to do that at the beginning of the year until kids really get a sense of what six feet looks and feels like. Or if we're just going to use the, the helicopter arms out model. But that is something that we're reviewing and we need to figure out, can we safely open the playground equipment? So I've been in communication with Mike Clark from the Palatine Park District. He opened those, his parks. We're in the process of, of doing the same here this summer. We just need to figure out how to safely do that when all the kids come back to school. And then at this time, field trips will not be permitted. And taking our kids and putting them into spaces that, that we have less control over in terms of the, the cleanliness. So at this point, field trips will not be part of the, of the fall experience for students.
Lori?
Yes.
There are a couple of questions with regard to how the, um, the lunches will work. I think it's worth clarifying that, that basically there will not be a lunch line.
Correct.
Where children will be able to choose whatever items they want from the lunch line, which is the way that it works now. But instead, a full lunch will be packed for each child to minimize the exposure and contact.
Correct.
There was also a question from a staff member with regard to the, if, if the children are eating in their classroom, no masks. Does this fall into the fifteen minutes? Is it a, is it a quick fifteen minutes done? How, how is that going to work?
Good question. What we're looking at is a twenty, twenty, twenty model. So from the time that the lunch is delivered and they start their lunch, they would have, you know, fifteen to twenty minutes to eat. Then they'll have twenty, fifteen to twenty minutes of indoor recess. And then they'll begin to transition outside to outside, outdoor recess. So that will, that is how the sixty-minute block will be broken up into fifteen to twenty-minute increments.
And it's really not very different than what, I mean, I don't know how all the schools work, but I know my experience with Stuart R. Paddock. The, uh, the lunch was broken up into twenty-minute eating periods for, for the children, twenty minutes. Kids were outside for twenty, some were eating for twenty and they rotated around. So it's not too different. It's just a slight difference in time.
You wash your hands as part of that time. You come back, you eat your lunch, you get up, you wash your hands and then you're, you're transitioning. So we're going to build little bits of transition time in between those three components that could, that, that make up the, the whole lunch hour. So that's our best thinking at this point. We've talked about the junior high schedules, math. We're looking at, some electives are under review in terms of feasibility. You know, band and foreign language are very important to our students and to our overhaul junior, overall junior high program. We just need to figure out how to safely allow kids to, to play their band instruments. I've been in tight communication with the superintendent in District Fifty-four, as well as the new superintendent, Dr. Smalls in two eleven. As one of two of the largest feeders to two eleven, we'll try to be very uniform in terms of how we offer band. We're thinking at this point, perhaps in a sectional schedule model, where kids that play the same instrument will come together in a, in a large enough space where they can really be safely distanced. But we have a little bit more work to do around band and the same with foreign language. Not all of our children participate in foreign language. So they might leave that classroom pod to deliver, to receive foreign language. Or we might be able to try to figure out how to do it virtually, where they wear a headset. So those are some of the decision points that are still under review. I'm almost done. Thanks for hanging with me. Arrival and departure procedures to prevent, again, clusters of fifty or more kids from forming. And if you've ever been at a school at the beginning of, before the ballots, hundreds, and, and now we have to make sure that fewer than fifty are there. So our arrival and departure procedures will be modified to use, to use all or most available doors. So that means we'll, there'll be tight communication between transportation and the building principals. They're actually, I've asked that they schedule individual meetings with Mr. Bramley. Dr. Paulcheck is going to help us get those scheduled so we can figure out how to help that flow as seamlessly as possible. Walkers and bikers, where would they, what doors would they go in based on where the bike racks are and, and kind of where they're walking from in terms of the neighborhoods and what doors are the closest? We're, we're trying to decide if there's a way we can stagger arrival times to, again, make sure that not all of our buses are pulling up at the same time. They seldom do, but you know, that is a part of Tom's work with the Transportation Department. Certainly directional signage will be added to hallways as kids come in. And we're going to really just work to make sure that we have increased supervision outside at the beginning of the day, if and when our junior high kids transition, if they do. So it would be midday and then at the end of the day to just remind kids to kind of keep it moving, keep, keep your distance and exit and enter the schools as, as safely and, and quickly as, as possible.
Yeah, real quick question on junior, junior highs. I'm sorry, Lori.
How it was going to go, so.
The, the whole concept, students stay, teacher transitions to the greatest extent possible. I can see how that could work very well at the K through six level. And I'm just thinking about differentiated learning for seventh and eighth graders in our junior highs. If, if we've got children that, you know, if we're, if we're assigning by, by math group, for example. But we've got different, different levels of success as far as language learners go or language arts, that type of thing. Will there still be the opportunity for differentiation?
Are you talking about? Or, or?
Not necessarily out of level. Not necessarily out of level. I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of, can you pull together quality cohorts that can stay together, that, that share enough across it to be beneficial for the whole group? Or will there be certain groups that by necessity will have students transition also, but on a more minimal level?
I think that's kind of a TBD, because you could be really strong in math, but have different needs in other subject areas. So that's why the junior high principals are starting with math to see what those cohorts would look like. And are they overly homogeneous? Are they more heterogenously, you know, constructed the way we would typically, you know, want our, our, our class sections to, to look, you know, across the district. I don't have a, a solid answer yet, because that's something that's the junior high principals are working on. I don't know if any of our, you know, junior high principals want to text, you know, Claire, if, if they have anything to share. We can check our phones as, as I'm talking and kind of listening and answering questions to see if any of them are, are listening tonight and want to weigh in, to see where they are in that process. We do Thursday morning have another junior high leadership meeting where our junior high principals meet with a number of us. And that was part of what was on the agenda, but that's not until Thursday morning. So.
As long as it's just being thought about in the background is.
No, I hear you.
Lori, Lori, can I jump in real quick to, kind of piggybacking off Lisa's comment with regard to looking at math first, is that we do have some of our fifth grade elementary students, sixth grade elementary students who will go into seventh grade math, just as their natural course. Are we looking to basically take their math and make it virtual for them so that they're not intermixing with the junior high kids as well, so that we're keeping them in their cohort?
So one of our very smart sixth grade teachers at Lincoln Bethia came up with that. She kind of solved that problem for us. And it would be more of a virtual opportunity to, to remote into a junior high classroom or to a, a different grade level, to have some time that would be direct instruction with the teacher and then some level be virtual. So we're still going to, going to fine tune that, but that is the likely way in which we will handle out of level math. So we don't have to mix kids across schools and then into the high school. In talking to Dr. Smalls during one of our many conversations, since she started just a few weeks ago, she said her high school staff is very comfortable having junior high students, you know, virtually participate in their classrooms and they're, they're set up, they're setting themselves up to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of clubs and sports, students and staff instructional day really and truly is our top priority first. Like we have to get this, bless you, you know, up and running. But a well-rounded educational experience certainly remains our goal. We know kids love clubs and they love their opportunities to, to participate in interscholastic sports, whether they're cut or no cut. So under evaluation will be before and after school clubs. The likelihood, I can tell you at this point, that before school clubs will happen is, is slimmer. Just again, with transportation and wanting to get kids in and minimize how many times kids are, are, are crossing paths with different groups. After school clubs, we are going to try to see what that might look like. The guidance from the Illinois High School Sports Association came out July fifth, so just the other day. We have read it. We did put a survey out, Risa and I were communicating over the weekend, Risa Cohen. And she put a survey out to other school districts within our conference to see what they were thinking in terms of interscholastic sports. And we will try to have a very unified approach to what that will look like across our conference. Certainly, we'd love to be able to offer all of those kind of extras. But we just might not be able to do so right at the beginning of the year, again, trying to prioritize what all of this will look like and, focusing our energies on core instruction is, is top. And then all of this is kind of secondary, but again, all under strong consideration. We will also try to not only align with other feeder junior highs. Again, I have been in very close communication with two eleven. And if they're going to figure out a way to do it, you know, we will, we will try to do so as well. Care. So many of our families participate in before and or after school childcare. So we have a meeting scheduled with Care, with Kathy Fabregans, who, who is the lead that works in District Fifteen and, and for the Park District as well. They will continue up to operate and, and, and support families that need support before or after. They will continue up to operate and, and, and support families that need um support before or after school to, to, to bridge. Um, their work schedules. Access will be restricted to the way it always is, but maybe even a little more so to just specific areas within the building. Um, we will help. I shared this presentation with Kathy the other day, so they have access to our best thinking right now. Um, we will ask them to submit any additional safety pro- protocols that they're developing. Um, making sure that, of course, they're, they're going to require the PPE and that social distancing to the greatest extent possible will be reinforced. Um, we will follow the same daily cleaning, uh deep cleaning procedures that we would. Um, as a school system and the same rules about supply sharing. Uh, so w- we have a nice, a very nice partnership with um. The Park District, so they will, I know they'll, they'll continue to be strong partners and will be very uh aligned in terms of uh. How we manage the. Space and student safety. Um, before and after school. Morgan, are you, you wanna talk about communication? Or do you want me to keep rolling?
Sorry, I'm managing our Facebook commentary, so I'm sort of going between.
I know.
Elements here, but I will hop on this one now. So uh, communication. ISBE has given us a significant amount of poster materials that we can utilize to enforce social distancing. Safety reminders and other requirements that we have to uphold for our safety precautions that we will be printing and putting in. Our school buildings. We have a number of other um signs that we'll be posting to help children understand how to wear their mask properly, what proper hand washing looks like, and those types of things. In terms of communicating with families and staff, when an individual tests positive. We will be working with Karen Floor and her nursing team to contact traces, Dr. Heinz has mentioned already. And only those people that qualify under that contact tracing will be notified in a positive situation. It will not be a school-wide notification. As you might assume it would be, it would only be those that would be impacted by that close contact clause that we have mentioned already. The way that we will be communicating will still be, um, it will be outlined and shared with families, because, because we know there's not. One route of communication that works for all. It will likely be a combination of things. An email, a text message, and perhaps a paper flyer or a paper note in the backpack of a child. So that we're sure that we are um hitting a lot of different categories in terms of uh communicating when we need to share this information with families. Families and staff will be asked to report possible cases to their school front office, the nurse's office. So that we can initiate that contact tracing that we've talked about. Uh, we have to really rely on our families to be our partners here, because we will not know. And we are not required to um ask that people come forward with this information. We really want people to understand the. Um, the situation we're in and become our partners with this and be responsible to report these instances when they occur. If you are a parent or a staff member, you're already subscribed to our newsletters, which typically come out about every other week. They also come out after every board meeting, and in special circumstances, we have special newsletters that are shared from Dr. Heinz. The schools also send newsletters that you will find helpful with more school-specific information and general updates that principals have to share. About their buildings. And um what's not on here is the teacher-level communication that I don't have direct hands-on, but teachers do have the tools. At their fingertips to communicate with parents about classroom-specific information. We do have a emergency communication system that all parents and staff members likely know about, and if we do have an emergency. You will be sent a text message and you will get a phone call from us in addition to an email. Our website will continue to be updated. We are developing a back-to-school return-to-learn website that we will share with, with families when our final plans are announced. So we would expect that um any new information regarding these plans will be shared there, as well as uh. On the announcement section of our website, which is a very prominent location right on the homepage.
Okay. Our second pathway, parents opt out of in-person instruction, students enroll in full-time virtual learning cohorts or classrooms. So that's next. Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry to mute in advance. Did you have something, Wendy? A question?
Wanted to um ask about communication, um, families and staff. Will be um asked to report possible cases. So we have a, um, a teacher that is in a room full of um students, and one um. Student appears to look pale or has um increased secretions of their, other increased coughing and um as uh, where, what um? What means does that teacher have to be able to communicate that to the family, to the nursing? Um, so that we can ensure that that uh student is still safe enough to um be in the classroom.
Karen, this is what we talked about yesterday with the nurse subgroup. Do you wanna take this one?
Absolutely. Glad to take this one. So one of the things that we've planned on, we would like to, oops, sorry about that. One of the things that we planned on is, is having the students stay put as much as possible. So we will have the teacher phone the nurse. Since we will have a second person in the health office. We will be able to have the nurse go to the classroom, assess the student, and determine what the next step should be. Will that step be to? Have the student wait for a little while, see if the system's symptoms progress. We'll go through the symptom check for COVID with them. And if necessary, we'll bring them down to the isolation room, call a parent, and ask them to come pick the, the student up.
Um, if there is a. A classroom that needs to be isolated because of that um certain circumstance. Um, if everybody is, if everyone in that classroom is isolated, does that, um, how will that impact uh families that have multiple children in the district? Do those children, uh, do those other siblings need to be isolated as well?
They, they will not. So the contact tracer will call and speak with the family member. So when we notify. And um, when we make a phone call to say that you've been possibly exposed to COVID. We will go through what the CDC recommends, the Illinois Department of Public Health recommends. We'll go through those. Those resources and those um instructions with the family. And then we will let you know how long that, that. Quarantine or that, that isolation at home will need to last. The nurses will be in close contact with families, giving them resources. Um, helping them provide whatever needs they may have if they, you know. Need to have medication delivered or when to be seen by a doctor. We're working on pulling all those resources together prior to school starting. But one thing I really wanna make sure that I emphasize to families is be prepared. That your child will have to spend some time. At home. Because there really isn't leg time. And there isn't time to find childcare. So if your child is sent home with symptoms. And your child is sent home because of potential COVID. Symptoms, they may need to be remotely learning from home, and they cannot come to school the next day. So the, the handbook, the parent-student handbook has been updated with a COVID section. That talks about the new guidelines from the Centers of Disease Control. It says seventy-two hours or three days symptom-free with no. Um, fever-reducing medication.
Thank you so much, Karen.
Yeah, I know that's gonna be hard for some families, but that's really where we are right now.
Yep. Absolutely. Okay, virtual learning, opt-out of in-person instruction, and I am going to happily turn this over. To our new Director of Instructional Technology, Janice Mathis.
All right. Um, thank you, Dr. Heinz, and members of the board. Um. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about this topic that I'm really passionate about, virtual learning. And as we look to school. Next year, we recognize that there are going to be some students who are not able to attend in-person instruction, either because of. An elevated heart risk. Uh, they have a family member with an increased risk, or possibly, um, they just prefer not to participate. So in response, we're looking at the potential and the benefits of creating these virtual learning cohorts. Uh, there is a lot of ongoing collaborative work happening to create a plan for what this will look like. Ultimately, our goals are to ensure that students have access to a strong and viable curriculum. That learning aligns with what's happening in schools. And that students feel safe and connected. At the same time. So uh, this, this plan is gonna be quite extensive. It's multifaceted. It, it includes everything from how do we. Um, ensure equitable access to technology, student safety. How do we ensure that learning is, is robust and matches what's happening in the classroom? So there's a lot of work that's going into this and a lot of collaboration as well. Um, next slide, please. So, um, here you're gonna see some of the logistical considerations that we've been discussing. There are many, as I've just mentioned, uh, in our, in our plan. So, but one of the first things we wanna talk about is that community and connection piece. Those are really key to having an effective virtual learning environment. And we're looking at different strategies and models for how, how to build community and connection. Um, we also have to closely examine what virtual learning looks like at home. So we need to set some expectations and then provide the supports to, to meet them. So um, this includes ensuring that every student has access to a Chromebook and a hotspot. Uh, providing parent education opportunities. Uh, in meeting the needs of all students through, you know, SPED, EL intervention and other services. And um, as was mentioned earlier, one of the considerations is, is what is the commitment? So, uh, you know, as we've discussed this, in order to provide for the least amount of disruption for students. Um, we're potentially aiming for this would be a um registration for the entire school year, or uh if we get to phase five. Okay. And now finally, this, and this is the part that really sort of is, 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 is my wheelhouse and that, that I love um. Working on is, it's really important to understand that learning virtually is, is different from learning in person. You know, kids at home, they're in different situations. They might have to negotiate learning space. Have young siblings as a distraction or inconsistent support at home. So we cannot expect them to sit in front of a computer without moving for seven hours a day and learn in the same way that they do in the classroom. So what this diagram does is it shows us some of the differences between in-person and virtual instruction. But if you notice, in the middle, we see a lot of commonalities. And this is how we bridge the gap between the two different environments. We have a lot of similar outcomes. But some of the ways we get at them are different. And um, in that virtual learning environment, for example, you know, if students are breaking out into a differentiated small group. In a virtual learning environment, they may have a meeting and, and go into um. Uh, breakout groups within a Google Meet. So there are, we're looking at all these different strategies and all these different ways that we can continue to really provide. Uh, robust learning uh in a virtual environment, as well as providing a lot of that social emotional piece and that community piece, which I mentioned earlier. So this plan is, 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 is happening with a lot of collaboration from, from the different return-to-learn teams. Um, in the, uh, administrators and, and teachers, and we're also taking in all of the feedback that uh we're getting. And the lessons that were learned from the spring, because we really do wanna make sure that, that for those students. Who cannot participate in, in-person learning, or they choose not to, that we provide them. With a, a, with an education and an experience that's, that's uh meaningful and rich and effective.
Okay, pathway three, blended hybrid experience, combining in-person and virtual. So um, there were a number of scenarios that we talked through. Um. One would be an AB attendance schedule. So one group would attend in person while the other attends um remotely. And then you would rotate either daily or weekly. Um. I'm hearing that some of the high schools are looking more into this model. One of the concerns. One of the benefits to this is it limits the overall number of people um in the school at one time. One of the, the concerns, though, that makes this challenging is. If you have working parents, which we have, uh, especially if you have both parents that are, are working. Or if you live in a one-parent household and that parent is working, uh, it creates a childcare issue. The other one would be a split shift schedule. So adjustments would be made to start and end times, and um certain grade levels or classes would come either in the morning or the afternoon. And they would have, as Janice talked about, um synchronistic or asynchronous experiences. So they would have some. Uh, learning that's happening face-to-face, then they would go home and they would be uh working independently. On um materials that the teacher may have pre-taught. Uh, live, and then they're gonna follow up and they're going to go deeper, they're going to do practice. Um, so it would be a split shift, morning and afternoon. Again, one of the benefits is it limits the overall number of students in a building. Um, one of the drawbacks, though, again, is, is the childcare issue and, and potentially transportation. Something that we talked about briefly would be, you know, what if our older students, so our junior high students, what if they stayed virtual? And we moved our, our fifth and sixth, or our fourth, fifth and sixth, depending on numbers and, and spaces available at our junior highs over. So we would have K-three in an elementary, we would have four, five and six, or five and six at the junior high, and the junior highs were virtual. And although um, you know, we thought initially it had promise. Um. We want our kids, again, every kid, um, every day to receive live instruction, because we really feel strongly that. Nothing can replace it. Um, so we, we don't know if this is, if, if this is an idea that we would forward. I had reached out to a Dr. Proctor at Harbor to see if they had space available. If we wanted to not only have our older students virtual, or if we wanted to have them in a different location. Unfortunately, there was no, uh, you know, room over there. Uh, we know one of our parochial schools in the area is closing, but it's a very small facility. So we did look around to see if there were any other places in which. Um, we could, we could transition our, our junior high students to, and we, we simply have too many of them. To move them off campus and into a different location. Um, and we don't know if we really want our junior high kids to be completely virtual, because we know they need. That social interaction, they need time in front of their classroom teachers, but that was another hybrid uh model that we, that we talked about a fair bit. So again, the hybrid challenges don't allow for the every child every day. There's certainly less face-to-face time uh between teachers and students. Uh, you know, we would be concerned about the, the ongoing learning disruption and, and potentially the negative impact. For our younger, our struggling learners, if they were, um, you know, completely virtual, or if they were getting half of their um instruction delivered. Face-to-face and another half um at home. Uh, the inconsistency of schedules, I think this is probably our biggest concern, would adversely impact our working families. Um, and that inconsistency of schedules would, uh, could potentially present. Uh, challenges for our teachers who usually plan together. And then that um split shift scheduling, according to Mr. Bramley, the Director of Transportation. Uh, would, would cause us to have to run additional bus routes. Uh, increased, increased transportation, which would cause us to incur increased transportation costs. So those were some of the hybrid. Uh, models and some of the challenges that, that we um have been discussing. A, a last option, and during our parent-focused group, you know, we kind of sheepishly asked. What if we, if we just flat-out said, you know, if, wherever we land in terms of what we'll be able to provide the, the. The students, the staff, and the, the parents of District fifteen. Um, what if those options didn't um meet the needs of a particular family, or they didn't like either of them? Uh, or all three of them, if, if we had three different offerings. Um, we, we want our parents to know that if, if you're not comfortable uh with any of the scenarios that we reviewed, or if you don't think we've landed on the right scenarios. There is always an option. And I hate to even say it out loud, but, but you can uh disenroll your child from District, District fifteen for the year, or until we are in phase five. Um, to pursue other educational opportunities. So what might that look like? Um, and I heard one of our folks that commented, that made a, a public comment, talk about homeschooling. So uh, the Illinois State Board of Education at their website, isbe.net uh forward slash homeschooling, has uh. A, a poll down. There's a form to fill out and a, a little bit of information that. Helps describe what that would look like, but the long and short of it is, is that parents would be agreeing for the year or until we're in phase five. That they would rather just educate um their children in their home. And not do any of, uh, any of the options that we would provide, or there's certainly other private or parochial schools. Um, in, there's many of them actually within our, within our boundaries, you know, that could be investigated. Although many of them are doing exactly, you know, what we're doing, and they're contemplating, you know. Increased safety enhancements, face-to-face instruction. Uh, many of them are contemplating a, a virtual experience as well, but that's another option. If you didn't um. Believe for whatever your reasons were that, that we selected the, the proper scenarios, you can always disenroll for the year, and we'd happily welcome you back at any point, but that is an option. Okay. Uh, Morgan, I don't know if you wanted to take a minute to talk about the parent survey. Uh, but we, we did put a survey out, and we just put a, a, a stat in here that um. We, we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of.
Sure, I'll talk briefly about the, the parent survey. So prior to ISBE. Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure. Um, prior to ISBE's guidelines being issued, we had distributed a parent survey. We know that some of the questions on our survey needed then to be modified, because the ISBE guidance came out afterwards. So we understood that when we reviewed the data. We had um two thousand seven hundred fifty-four people participate in the survey, which is roughly a thirty-five percent participation rate, based on the number of individuals that were emailed. Of those individuals, the preferred scenario was to face instruction with a hybrid next, distance learning next, and 10% unsure. So one thing to note is while the participation rate was relatively high, we noticed that the diversity in our respondents was pretty low. And the majority of our families that took the survey were from Plum Grove, Hunting Ridge, Pleasant Hill. And we did not get as much feedback from our families on the other side of our district. And additionally, we did ask individuals to select what programs their children were enrolled in, so we could identify sort of more of the diversity of the individuals responding. And the, of those that took the survey, we only had about 200 state that they were in our bilingual program. And we have far more than that in the district. So it was a disproportionate number of people that, that participated in that survey.
Sam, I know you had a question. Zubair had a question. And then Sam, did you have a question that you wanted us to answer relative to the surveys? So Zubair, you were waiting.
Yeah, well, these are questions that we've already talked about them, but just sort of kind of random here. One was, did we take any consideration as to the, like, when we're doing the, the virtual cohorts and the kind of the option to the, you know, whether it's a good idea or not of, of just kind of streaming, I think that was one of the, the public comments as well, is just streaming the actual classrooms as they are, you know, you know, being conducted. Is that a, a better, or I just wonder if that, if that was considered and whether, you know, what, what was the thought process?
It, it was considered and it would be something that would, we would really have to reach an agreement on with our union. So we would engage in a conversation about it and determine if, if it was, would be an, what's the word I'm looking for? If it would be something that we would need to engage in some type of an impact bargaining session around the notion of streaming, doing a live stream from a classroom. So it is something that when we have our, our follow-up meetings with our union, and we've been meeting, we had a union leadership presentation last week that I led, Lisa Nass, who will take over in a few minutes, and in terms of workforce updates. She's been meeting with the union groups and gathering a lot of their questions and, and hopes and feedback. It would be something that we would, we would want to engage with our union around having that live classroom camera on our, on our, our teachers.
So basically the kind of the, the use of a camera itself is something that has to be kind of negotiated.
Yeah, it's something that we would definitely want to talk to our teachers about for sure.
Okay.
We had two parent focus groups last week. We had 40 parents invited, around half of them participated, and they, they were very forthright with their, their thoughts, their hopes, what they hope to see, what they hope not to see. We did take a lot of their feedback and continue to refine the presentation that we're walking you through this evening. So we certainly thank all of our parents that participated. Not here, not listed on this slide. We also had three staff focus groups today for each about an hour in length. And again, great participation, creative ideas, sharing hopes, the things that they hope to see, things that they hope not to see. Not surprising what they were all hoping for was returning to school. They missed their students. They know their students missed them and one another. So that was a, a big teacher theme. Our parent focus groups, the majority of those that participated really wanted that full-time in-person instruction, just like our teachers did, certainly with a lot of safety enhancements. A lot of talk with both parents and teachers about mask wearing and, and wanting to, to make sure that we were going to be able to enforce that kids come to school with the proper face coverings and what our protocols would be if they did not. They, the parents and teachers talked about special education, health requirements, and just making sure that we were very strategic and supportive in terms of how we were going to ensure that we were going to meet those IEP goals. And then expressed, the parents expressed concern about distance learning engagement, the overall effectiveness of the spring experience and what, you know, how do we apply what we've learned from our forced closure, distance learning? And then how will we take that information to really build a very robust and different virtual learning experience? So that, that came through, I would say with both of our groups, both parent and, and staff. So preparing for frequent change is, is something that you heard Janice talk about. Regardless of what scenarios we, we offer our parents, whether that's face-to-face, hybrid, virtual, we know that we need to be prepared for an additional round or two, or, you know, who knows, of school closure should we see a resurgence in or a second wave of, of the, the virus that would, would force us to go back into a virtual environment. So we can't stress enough. Staff, we're going to need to keep, you know, be real agile in terms of our thinking and our preparedness to do so. For working parents, it's certainly going to be, what are those backup plans? Who will be able to, to watch my, my children if we're, if we're back at home and, and we're not under a stay-at-home order? Which is, you know, kind of how we were able to make distance learning happen, because we had parents that were, the vast majority of, people that were non-essential workers were home to, to do their job and to become, you know, immediate teachers. We, so we want to make sure we're planning about, we have that mindset. But we also want to make sure that we understand that some schools or classrooms within schools may close and not whole schools. So we've talked about that. We just have to, we can't say that enough, that, that, that there could be closures in certain areas and not others. So should a school close or a child need to self-quarantine, students will continue to be engaged with learning and will continue to work with teachers and to develop, and the board to develop a comprehensive plan in terms of what that'll look like. And then we're working with community stakeholders to increase like broadband connectivity through the Illinois Connected Communities Grant. So we have, we can help our families that don't have internet access kind of close that gap and consistently have it beyond us offering them a hotspot. So we're gonna, we're going to try to continue to get more and more of our families internet access that they can count on, whether they're in a virtual cohort or whether it's a forced closure. So the goal has been and will remain, if you could go back Claire, that everyone feels safe and connected and really able to access learning regardless of what scenarios we put forth. All right, parent education and support. We know that virtual learning couldn't happen without the support of the parents. So we want to make sure that we will this summer continue to make instructional videos that will help teachers and parents navigate a virtual learning environment, so that the tech team is, is developing that list. Video topics will vary throughout the year. These are a few examples, SEL curriculum, instructional learning platforms and tools, how to use them. We heard from parents that there were so many platforms and apps and tools, it was hard to navigate them all. So we want to plan some instructional videos and parent universities around raising the comfort and competence of our parents to help their children navigate those platforms and tools. We have more work to do in terms of training our parents in how to access infinite campus, how to find Chromebook support when needed. And learning will be available for on-demand access at any time on the district website. So we'll push out the videos via potentially Blackboard, but we'll also have them stored, so parents can go to them when they, when the need arises. And parent educa, parent education opportunities will be available in multiple languages. Renee Urbansky led the BEPAC, our, our bilingual parent advisory council. Last week I was able to pop into that meeting. And some of our bilingual parents really said they want to participate, but they just need to make sure that the trainings and the parent universities are available in, in multiple languages. So that is something that she will help us deliver on. All right, curriculum, learning loss and acceleration. Robyn Cook will be leading us through this portion of our slide deck.
Thank you, Dr. Hines and members of the board. So our team, the Learning Loss and Recovery Team, when all of this started, we did a really deep dive into a lot of the, the new research that's been coming out since COVID began and schools started to close. A lot of very robust research has come out about what some of the gaps that are going to be happening for students and their learning loss. So a lot of our group has been working with that second commitment that Dr. Hines spoke with at the beginning and looking at that, that idea of how this will impact our, and widen our achievement gap and increase learning loss for some and most of our students in our district. So we've talked a lot about addressing some of those challenges, and we know that this is not going to be a short change, especially with some of the things that have already been spoken about in this presentation, that we know that some students may be in and out of the classroom, depending on how the, the state follows through certain phases. We may have to close schools altogether. And so we know that this is going to be a long-term goal and, and going to take extended time to get kids back to where we want them to be. And we know that through some of this research, that remediation really is not the best course of action. That was some of the first things that people were asking about when this happened, is how do we get the learning that kids lost, that three months that we, we didn't have, where, how do we take those skills and then kind of copy paste them at the beginning of next year? And the, the best research that's coming out is saying that that's actually not the best way to go. There's been other places where this has happened. If you think back to Hurricane Katrina, that was an approach that a lot of the school districts there took, and that was something that did not go over well. They have still learning gaps to this day for some of their student populations. And so we really wanted to make sure we looked at some of those, those best practices and research. And we use that to guide our practices and our, our timeline for moving forward and what things are going to look like in our classrooms and our districts, so that we didn't make some of those same mistakes. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So during some of our research and looking at what best practices will help our students the best, we know that some of these things like consistent opportunities to work on grade-appropriate assignments, strong instruction where students do most of the thinking in a lesson, deep engagement in what they're learning, and students who hold, or teachers who hold high expectations for students and believe that they can meet grade-level standards. Those are the things that are really going to move our kids and get them back to where we need them to be when they come back. It's also going to provide teachers and students with a sense of normalcy, which is what they need, especially when we come back. We, again, like I said, we don't want to take that last three months of content. We don't want to take a kid who was in third grade and give them some of their third grade content, because that's not going to get them back to where we need them to be if they're now in fourth grade. Specifically, students who have had access to this, they, they do better in school all around. And in some very robust studies that have been highlighted around some of these key pieces and resources in classrooms, that students who actually entered the classroom behind did better when they have access to this. So they, they jumped ahead significantly. Let's go to the next slide. So this shows some of the response rates to some of those, those pieces that were listed on the previous slide of grade-level assignments, high-level instruction, engagement and expectations from teachers. When students started the year behind and they had greater access to these pieces, they jumped significantly ahead than they would if they were met where they are, some of the terms that people use. If we were to go back and say, well, you were in third grade last year, let's give you some third grade material, even though you're in fourth grade now. We know that if we hold those, to them to those high expectations and give them access to those grade-level content, that they will, they will reach those expectations for us. So this knowledge is also going to help us move forward with some of our focuses for next year around the idea of agency ownership and identity. It's something that we're utilizing in a lot of our collaborative meetings. Janice spoke earlier about some of her virtual learning plan that's going on. We're also collaborating with that group and some of our SEL teams and our principal teams to work around these things, because the idea of agency really speaks to that, that willingness to engage in some of the tough work for students, ownership over their thinking and really getting them some access into that grade-appropriate assignments and really deeply engaging in some of those things and having strong identities as learners in the classroom. So that speaks highly to that idea of, you know, teachers have high expectations of me and I know that I can do this, even if I did miss school. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So some of the work that our team is doing, what we've been working with a lot of teams of teachers, and we're continuing to work through the summer and we will continue to work in the fall, is that we're aligning our vision and goals. So that goes to that collaborative idea of working with some of the other teams, like our SEL team, our virtual learning team, to make sure that we have truly responsive instructional practices going around all of our content areas, whether students are in class or they're learning virtually. So we've been working with some teacher teams for different content areas to prioritize some critical standards and prerequisite skills, so that we can do some of that curriculum compacting and true, true responsiveness in our practice that Dr. Hines spoke about earlier. We're also developing guidance and tools for teachers. When we talk about trying to be truly responsive for our instruction, we have to know exactly where kids are and some of the gaps that they're missing. And so we want to talk a lot about developing formative assessments that teachers can use in the moment, you know, when they start a unit, they can say, what do you know? Great. I know, I know you know this, and I know you know that, that you don't know this. And then I can use that to my, to help me inform how I'm instructing a specific unit. So we're going to be working on developing some of those tools for teachers, so that they don't have to come at the beginning of school and do some of that. Another thing that we'll be doing along that is updating our pacing guides and scope and sequence to reflect some of those curriculum compacting that we're doing. We're also going to be using a responsive instructional framework, so that teachers can have some tools to help them with that. We also want to make sure that we're educating teachers about this and principles and how they're building, leading their building PD, so that we all know and we're on the same page about remediation not being the best thing to do and that we can all follow these four practices and live it in everything that we're doing as well. So that ties into that number five piece where we're talking about communication, training, and really living this so that we know that we can all work together and do this work together in collaboration. Some other pieces are, oh yes, go ahead.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
So ISM, ISM, your guidance and tools for teachers. Um, just make, just correct me if I'm wrong. Am I seeing a vision as we listen to the other responses from the audience that we have two different, it sounds like we have two different groups, right? A number of, of parents who really want their kids to be opted out and, and work from home, and others who, who are going to have their students go into the classroom. As we're working with these teachers, do you believe, is it your, your vision that these teachers will work between the virtual environment as well as the in-person environment? Or are we going to have two wholly separate groups, you know, the virtual teachers and the non-virtual teachers?
Well, I know that's a big piece that Dr. Hines and I and some of the other people that are leading some of these teams have been talking about. I think that we'll be able to work out some of the logistics for that a lot better when we know numbers of students that are going to be opting out and not. We do know that either way, based on, you know, potential closure of schools and slipping into phases and in and out of phases, that teachers are all going to need to be equipped with being able to teach virtually. So that's one piece that's going to be so crucial for some of us to be collaborating. If we're talking about, we really know that these instructional practices and that these robust learning opportunities are the ways to get kids to where they need to be. We have to be able to do that, whether we're in person or we're virtual. And so that's something that's going to be really crucial for us to make sure that we're collaborating, whether teachers are in person or virtual, or if they're slipping in and out of either of those things. Another piece of this that a lot of people have had questions around is some of our MTSS systems and our assessments. So we will be doing some of our standard assessments, the same that we would in any normal school year, because we know that that's going to inform us for some of our readiness levels for kids. One of the key things is that we don't want to over-assess kids, right? We know that they need to have the maximum amount of time in class instruction and with their teachers, not doing assessment. So we want to be also very smart about that. So we're taking a look at some of our MTSS processes and again, doing some of those cross-content collaborations to see, you know, where can we be really intelligent about this and responsive with our interventions? And making sure that we're addressing some of the social emotional needs along with the academic needs in our monitoring and in our response of that.
Okay, thanks, Robyn. Dr. Swanland.
All right, great. Thank you, Dr. Hines and members of the board. So I am going to be discussing our social and emotional return to learn and the work of the committee. And so this is our goal. So as outlined in our strategic plan, the purpose of the social emotional learning is what's to create lessons to develop professional development activities and various ways to support student and staff social and emotional wellbeing. So ultimately, what we're shooting for is to have everyone feel safe, connected and able to access learning. So within our groups, we put together multiple ways in which our schools could do this. So on the next slide, it shows our different areas. So we had three different subcommittees that worked through these various tasks in order to really have us ready to return to learn and like feel that safety and connectedness. So the first part, we've actually talked about quite a bit, or it's been mentioned today. That's the use of these cool tools through our positive behavior and events, intervention supports. Basically, what that means is that we right away will help students and staff and everybody understand what the expectations are. What are the new routines? What are the routines we're keeping? How is it going to look? How is it going to feel? So that, that any anxiety around that kind of, you know, is eased in the sense that we have that clarity and structure around these are, this is the and structure around these are, this is the expectations. And that also really helps people feel safe and welcome. The next part then is going is within that on its own, yeah, is our, how, what we're going to do to help people feel connected and acknowledged. So these are activities around ways that we just promote that we're all happy that we are, we are able to learn regardless of the format of learning that we're in. So this applies, all of this applies for both the in-person and any of the virtual learning as well. So this is tools and ways to acknowledge students have that connection and just that good feeling of safety about being at school. And then finally, we're providing resources around connection in the school community. So resources for teachers to teach the lessons, and these are ongoing. So it's not just the beginning of the year, but then there'll be lessons for social and emotional as well. How to have that classroom routines and environment and community with your students so that those needs are addressed and then the students are able to learn. So in order to do this work, where are, this committee has kind of created all these resources. And then the climate and culture teams within the building will be able to get professional development on it and then utilize it so that it's unique to their building and a part of that building culture so that they can really help take ownership of it with everybody in the school and that's a part of that school culture. So we're, we're trying to have it, this be an emphasis in the sense that we value safety, we value feeling connected, and we value the social and emotional learning of our students.
Laura? Can I just ask a basic question? And I know it's really basic, but at this point in this day and age, we can't even hug anymore. And you have kids who who crave that, you know? You have young students who may want to hug one another. And we have to navigate between teaching them that this may not be safe. So I just wanted to know if you could just address that for the audience so that we, you know, it doesn't go unturned? That we, that we just didn't, you know, touch on that.
Absolutely. So that will, that, those, that type of point is very important in what we're addressing, both through our lessons and that classroom community. So for example, the teachers will be able to help the students think of alternate ways such as air high fives or different messages that you can send through technology to, to still acknowledge and have that connection with others. So instead of saying we no longer connect, can connect, where it's more of the message of we still are connecting and these are all the different ways that you can connect positively and connect with others and also monitor yourself too and have that own own awareness as well. So social emotional learning is about what you're talking about, that connection and the multiple ways that we can do it. So that's why right away it's helping think about and and acknowledge that many different tools and resources and ways that we can say, I'm happy to see you. I feel good to be here and provide that positive feedback.
I think too, Wenda, and for Dr. Swanland, Claire, if you could go back to the areas one, two, three, go back again. Connections and acknowledgements and classroom community, I think both of those two really get to what you're talking about, that there are other ways in which even though we're not going to physically hug one another, there are ways that we're going to be very explicit in terms of helping to build those connections. And part of it will be through lesson development. Another part of it will be through introducing restorative practices and and teaching teachers and students how to have classroom chats because that is really a strong way in which kids will connect with one another. So I think we're even going to have more connection and we're going to need to have more connection based on kind of where we've been and where we are. And I think that the work of the SEL team, and again, thank you for adding another member to that. I think we're going to have a lot more connection than we've ever had in the past, despite the fact that we can't physically, you know, reach out and hug somebody.
Right. And certainly before school starts and as we establish that with our students and our parents, that makes sense. But what happens when you catch them in the midst of that hug? Because that's what young, that I'm seeing even in the park or even while I'm walking, young children are going and running up to one another before you even get to that point. Yeah, they've already touched.
Yeah. So that will be part of the cool tool development. It'll certainly be in the communication that we send to parents in terms of how they're going to be, how we're going to ask them to help us prep children for the return to school and some of the new expectations. I know one of our folks that commented talked about virtual school, virtual school tours. And we have talked about the possibility of doing that or even just allowing families to come in in the summer on a scheduled basis to see what the school looks like. So that is, that is well underway, but it'll be a partnership with parents in helping us set those expectations before kids arrive. And then the work that the teachers and the principals will do at their buildings on the way they've always done in terms of setting common expectations and explicitly teaching kids those, we call them station rotations. They may just have some different elements, some new, some new tools, but it's, it's a pretty well-established practice in the district that's been going on for quite some time. It'll just be tweaked now to support the change in our environment due to the pandemic. All right, Lisa and us, so I think I just heard coughing. Are you okay?
I'm fine.
To take worse workforce update.
So when we talk about our workforce, most of what we're looking at is intertwined and this isn't in isolation. So some of the things have been discussed already. So I know we've all had a long meeting so far, so I won't repeat too much. But the first thing, our, our goal is just to make sure everyone's ready to return back to work, whatever that may look like. We know it's going to look different than what we're used to. Hopefully, it won't be for too much longer, but we do know that this year is going to be different. So the first thing that we really looked at is using our CARES Act dollars to allocate additional staff. We know that we're going to need additional subs, anticipation of people getting ill at a higher rate. We do want to divide our students so they're in smaller groups. So we know we're going to need additional supervisors such as lunch and recess. We're going to increase our custodial staff to help with the cleaning increase that we're planning on doing. And we also need additional staff in the office. Those were the main things. For the office, we're going to need people to help with phone calls and contacting parents as students may have issues during the day or be sent to the nurse. Our, our real goal is to make sure that we're staffed appropriately, whether that's virtually or whether that's at home. So we did survey parents. We also surveyed teachers and other staff members to get like a dipstick idea of where people will be, who's able to come back. Because just like students, there are going to be some staff members who aren't able to return. So our first thought is to look at the students, see where we need our staff, and then to match our, our staff to the needs of our students and try to accommodate this unique time as much as we possibly can. We had, sorry, I went out of order. Your one, thank you. One important part is as a district, we need to start on a large level. You know, our main goal to get through it first is what model are we using? How are delivering appropriate instruction? And just getting kids to school, having them safe, getting them fed, getting them home in a safe manner. But what we also need to not forget about is those granular details that are going to come up. And who's been the most effective in helping us plan for those is our five union leaders. And the, the people on the ground, they're our frontline. They know the subtle nuances of what happens at a school. And sometimes those, you know, we, we call it getting caught in the weeds. We don't want to get into too much of these details while we're getting an overall picture, but we don't want to forget about those because they're very important. And our goal really is to anticipate as many of those things as we can so we can proactively address those before they happen. We know there are some things we're not going to anticipate. I think one of the overarching themes of this year is going to be flexibility. Parents, students, staff, I think we got a slight glimpse of that starting in March. But we've learned from being home and what that entails. And we want to enhance it and provide the best situation we can for our community and our staff in this really unsure time. You can flip to the next slide. One of the things we've done is engage with our STR partnership to look at our classroom configuration, really looking at the classrooms, what we could take out to provide as much social distancing as possible. We're also looking at our nutrition services staff. While they're on the line, we want to make sure they're socially distancing. And then when we're delivering food, I think someone mentioned that earlier, it's going to be different than a typical lunch where kids choose their lunches or walk through a lunch line or go to a lunchroom. We're going to work on having people deliver that and work on that process so there's as little cross between classes as possible. We've talked a lot tonight about building safety enhancements. We've done Plexi. We want to keep kids in cohorts. And I won't go through that laundry list because Dr. Heinz did a really nice job of talking about all those safety measures. And it's, it's nice as time has gone on, people have really shared some input and nuances that have helped us plan for some of those. Our custodial staff is working on cleaning and how we're, you know, we, we're used to deep cleaning once every five days to get a whole building deep cleaned in a week. And we had a shift very quickly to look at how do we get the classes deep cleaned every day? So we've bought things like misters and looked at cleaning protocol. And our custodial staff, I have to say right now, has done a spectacular job with both custodial and maintenance. They have not been at home. They have been at work since March, right along with our nutrition services staff and our bus drivers. Many of us administrators have been there too, but it's amazing what those three groups have done in light of a very difficult situation. And I really applaud all those people who have come in every day to really get us through and get us ready for the next year. We are going to look at, we have typical trainings that we do for our teachers each year, but we're going to add trainings before school starts to train people about returning to work in a COVID environment to make sure that everyone, teachers, custodial staff, support staff, everyone's aware of really what we need to do. I know one of the comments from the parents was they've seen a lot of people with the masks on, but their nose isn't covered or what to do about taking the mask on and off. And just being very explicit about things that seem simple, but hash hand washing and how do we train our students? And mask wearing and how do we train our students? We, we know that's going to be a feat, but we're, we're used to training students to do things and, and we think this is right up our alley to train them to, to live in this new type of environment. Our new teacher orientation, which is right around the corner, it starts the beginning of August. Just like kids, it's really important for adults to be face-to-face, especially when they're being welcomed to a new workplace. Unfortunately, it won't look the same as it normally has. But we are going to try to weave in some live new teacher orientation where we could split groups up into smaller manageable groups and socially distance. And then partially, we're going to, to do training virtually. And Institute Day, and I, I have to say that this is more the Department of Instruction's work, that they work very hard on refocusing what our Institute Day will look like. Just like I said earlier, we have to be super flexible. So it's not going to look like our typical, typical first two institute days. We're going to really focus on planning and delivering virtual instruction because whether you're virtually teaching or teaching at school, we are anticipating and we have to be anticipating that we're going to most likely have to be ready at the drop of a hat to either leave as a whole building or leave as a classroom. So we really, we really need to plan for and do some professional development on how to be ready for that with very little notice. We did it in March. Like I said, we've, we've learned from that experience and we're really refining what that'll look like. So people can shift pretty quickly like we're anticipating they'll have to do throughout the course of the year. We're really taking those two days of Institute Dance and it's not a lot of time, but it's two days that we're going to front load a lot of that learning and teaching and what we need it to look like for this year. We also have our Meet the Teacher event that, as the teacher, that was always one of my favorite days to meet my students and meet my parents. And if you look at the guidelines, those types of activities are suggested to be, the guidance is suggested to be virtual. So we're really looking on how to abide by that guidance and make it very valuable for students and teachers and parents to connect at the beginning of the school year. Although it'll be virtual, we want to make sure that connection in the beginning of the year rolls off well and sets us up for a successful year.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Any questions for Lisa?
Question on the PD front, and this may also be a Lori or Meg question. Just our continued implementation of CLR this year and if that will continue in the same way or if we will be altering the professional development piece for our teachers.
We still intend. I'll let, I'll start and then I'll let Meg go into greater detail, but we still are very much committed to CLR. And, and we have a new cadre that will onboard and groups that have been, have gone through their first round will go through their second round. So Meg, do you want to, you can rattle off all the schools and groups so quickly. Do you want to chime in?
Absolutely. We have cohorts A, B, and C. A was the ones who started originally and they will be continuing with stipended positions that we're going to be working with the union to develop a job description for where each of the schools in Cohort A, which is Jane Adams Winston Campus Junior High, the original five or six schools. And they will each be able to select a lab classroom teacher where staff can go in and out of that classroom and be able to see some of the protocols in action in their own building at their own grade level. And that person would also potentially be leading the binder studies so that the professional development is continued at the building. And then our Cohort B schools are the schools that are going to have the opportunity to be professionally coached this year as well as have the input of our new, our additional full-time equivalent CLR coach in addition to Angelique, our current CLR coach, to be able to have in-classroom or virtual coaching in their virtual classrooms. So we're going to be able to make sure that both of our different environments that we're offering are going to be able to be infused with CLR. And then finally, our last five or six schools are going to be starting their CLR journeys in January and finishing up with day two at our May 2021 Institute Day, which it sounds crazy to say, but it's right around the corner. So by the end of next year, yes, all of our schools will be CLR infused and implementing.
Awesome. Thank you.
See what I mean? She just.
Yes, that's what I think.
Okay. So again, every decision that we've put forth in this deck and that we've talked over the last five months in terms of trying to develop some type of return to work, return to learn plan, really put, you know, figuring out a way to safely educate every student, you know, every day in a school setting, that's the main reason we exist. Going to advance to the next one. I want to run over one more, the, some dates for upcoming things that we have happening, if you will. At this late hour, things is the only word I can come up with, meeting schedules, plans. So tomorrow, we're going to synthesize feedback, comments from Facebook, public comments, and get, and again, direction and response from the board. Thursday, July 9th, we will be sharing a staff webinar explaining the pathway scenarios and the decision points. So that will go out to our, our staff. Friday, July 10th, a parent letter will, will go out explaining pathways offered for the 2020-21 school year. And, and we really hope to have those final offerings shared on Friday, July 10th. It's yellow because, you know, we may, we may need an extra day or so, but our, our target would like to be that we share what those pathways are, where we've landed in terms of what we're recommending and proposing will be this Friday. There will be registration implications because many of our parents, although not all of them, many of our parents have registered, many have not. There's a likelihood that there will be some need for parents to go back and modify registration to, if we offer more than one pathway to parents. So we know there might be a change in registration status needed. And we're working to make sure that we can create some custom screens through Infinite Campus that would allow our parents to do so. Then Monday, July 13th, after the parents hopefully on Friday receive the pathways, they have the weekend to, to read it, think about it, comment on Facebook, reach out to, you know, friends and administration, whomever, to ask questions. We will have a parent webinar and a time to have a Q and A with me on Monday. The goal there will be to provide time for parents or guardians to ask questions before they decide on an instructional pathway, if more than one. If more than one pathway is offered. Then Friday, July 17th, that parent enrollment, if you will, window will close. In terms of our parents deciding which of the pathways they're going to take, again, based on how many we offer. And then at that point, very quickly, you know, HR and our school principals will start working double time to figure out the staffing implications. Reshuffling potentially class sections and, you know, just a lot of stuff will be happening very quickly behind the scenes. And, and it would be our hope then that by Friday, August 7th, staffing plans, student class list rosters and bus routes will be finalized. And that is roughly one week prior to our, our first Institute Day when staff comes back. And you can see that the opening days for our first through eighth graders will be Monday, the 17th. And then our kindergarteners will join us and our, our, our early childhood classes as well on Tuesday, August 18th. And then we're off to the races. So those are timelines and next steps. And discussion and questions.
Very really quick on that last slide there. With regard to how parents will be selecting their decision, will it be through the parent portal still? Will it be via email? Can you just touch base on that really quick? So I know we have a number of people that are watching right now so that they can all hear that at the same time.
So Tom, you know, feel free to jump in, but you were working with Tim to have it go through Infinite Campus, is that correct?
Yeah, so we're thinking that Infinite Campus is probably the best format for this. Because every parent can access it either through the Infinite Campus app. And they should have access to Camp and Campus Parent as a result of their students' enrollment. So it just seems like that would be the easiest way for us to keep records of it. Things like email, et cetera, become very unwieldy very quickly, especially with the number of families we'd be dealing with. So we're looking at adding something to the parent portal where they can go indicate their choice directly there. As Dr. Heinz had indicated, many of our families have already registered. So it's not very feasible to go back and alter the registration paperwork. Because that would just be an unnecessary demand on parents. But Infinite Campus through the parent portal is the most likely route right now for parents to be able to commit their choice to us.
Okay. There, there have been a couple of questions that have come through. Lori or somebody else, if it's more appropriate for somebody else to answer. And it was specifically about choices on the instructional pathway. And flexibility of if, if a choice is made. Can you give a couple of reasons why you wouldn't want children jumping back and forth from, from one choice to another choice? There's a choice and it's kept until a certain point in time and, and the why of that, please, from an SEL standpoint?
Yeah, I think the, the biggest one that comes to mind right off the bat and others, please feel free to, to chime in. Would be class sizes and, and when we section a classroom, you know, what we have to determine to what level we're sectioning those classrooms. There's classroom disruption if kids are going to be coming in and out. You're, you're setting up routines, expectations, you're building relationships. And then you may have different kids coming and going throughout the course of the school year. I would say are the top two reasons that we've set for the year as a, as a potential decision point. If anybody else on the call that's, you know, on, on the team can think of any other reason, you know, please feel free, but those are the top two.
I think Dr. Heinz, some of the conversations we've had is, and you know, Mrs. Mathis had, had emphasized that. Distance learning, remote learning and in-person learning are two different formats of teaching. There are some different methodologies, they cover material in different ways. And it would be very difficult for kids to make regular transitions. And so one of the reasons behind that is we really want to make sure that there is predictability and stability for students. That really supports their learning in a way that they can understand, get used to and continue with. So except for likely very extreme cases, this would be best for a student's learning style. So they wouldn't be transitioning to an entirely different environment and likely ending up in a lesson that is emphasizing different things. Because the methodologies do differ.
I think is, oh, is also transportation, the implications of, of transportation. And how we, how we section in route buses and the number of students that we assign is, is another factor that we've talked about. Anyone else?
Lori, for students that have identified special education needs, also the, the importance of the consistency of their providers. That are working with them throughout the school year. Because they know of their accommodations, their services, their goals and the supports that are required.
Great. That was Ann Scully, our new assistant chief for student services. Thank you, Ann. EL, Renee, do you have any, anything to add for our EL population?
I would say the very same thing that, that Ann just shared, you know, that it's consistency in services for our students. Who vary across proficiency levels and their needs differ in different learning contexts. So to work with a consistent, you know, professional would certainly be a benefit to them.
Okay.
I think it might make sense for someone to, to talk about how this will or will not affect the, the assessment of, of kids' grades and whatnot. For whether you're on one system or another system. I know that, that might be something the parents are thinking about, you know, like how, you know, how are, how are kids graded? When they have in-person versus, you know, some of the virtual.
During the emergency school closures, you know, I would say most educators didn't agree with the fact that. We, you know, we weren't required to give grades. Because we know as soon as some of our students learned that, you know, it was pretty much a pass fail experience. Engagement shifted for some of our learners. So grading, you know, we will have a very similar grading experience between whether we have kids that are face to face and kids that are virtual. We're, we're going to want to make sure that we have feedback mechanisms. We're going to want to make sure that we have clarity and consistency around how we grade assignments. There might be some variance, again, based on the differences in a virtual versus a live environment. But grading will be more similar than different and will, will be very important for, for this upcoming school year. In a way that was different than the, the fourth situation that we found ourselves in in the spring. With guidance from the state making it all basically optional. Meg or, you know, Robin, anybody on the call from, from DOI or District Improvement have anything else to add?
I think you said it perfectly, Lori. I think that ultimately consistency is going to be the key, whether we're in-person or virtual. That's going to be the best thing to maintain same expectations. And when we talk about rigorous learning opportunities that really allow students the best learning that they can have.
I agree. And the reason, you know, why even ISBE stated that we weren't going to be having grades. Or that students wouldn't be negatively impacted by grades was because it was so unprecedented. And there, there really was no time to plan for the, the big transition that virtual learning had become. And the things that we were faced with and that our students were faced with. But now that's not the case.
Any other questions from the board? Morgan has been kind of monitoring Facebook throughout and been trying to, we have 800 viewers right now. And she's been kind of managing some questions to the best of her ability while we're, you know, having this live stream meeting. But are there specific questions from the board, information that you would like to know more about? Or anything that you'd like us to consider that we didn't present to you at this time?
Not, not really something I'm looking for presentation on, but I just wanted to say to the administration, thank you guys so much for putting this together. I think effective for all of us on the board, this isn't just a decision about, you know, us, this, there, we all have kids in the district. So it's important that we're making a decision based on our children as well as the 12,000 other children in the district. And so I think that this is very helpful to not only us, but to the community to understand the process that is being gone through. That this isn't just something that, you know, is being thrown together willy-nilly and then we're going to make a decision on. That we are taking this seriously and that unfortunately, we know, the seven of us know and the administration knows that. Whatever decision we make, there are going to be people that aren't happy. And understanding that and that we are taking the time to consider all the options that are out there. And just by the number of people on Facebook tonight, we know and we see how much it cares, it means to you and how much you care about it. And hopefully you've seen that this isn't just something that we're taking very lighthearted. That the administration has taken a vast amount of time, broken off in different discussion groups. To consider the different ramifications and options of every option that we possibly have out there. That we can go and put forward to and knowing that some parents are going to want their kids to stay at home. And some parents want full time and some parents want a hybrid. And we have to think about the 12,000 students plus the 2,000 employees and what the best way to go about that is. So, you know, when we make these decisions, we make it with our children in mind, but also for the 12,000 children and the 2,000 employees that are here as well. And knowing that this is something that is unprecedented and we have to make this decision. And again, thank you to the administration for ensuring that we as a board and the community know the steps that we're taking to go through this process on the reopen.
Our pleasure. It's been a lot of work, but it's very, very, very important work. And we've never been in this situation before as educators or as a country. So it's, this is all very new and novel, but we've invested a lot of time and we appreciate everybody that's helped us get to this point. And, and we really just want to hear from the board at this point. In, in terms of any consensus that you have, any, any thoughts that you have or, or questions?
Yeah, I have a, just a question about the, the amount of flexibility that we have as a district. I know we have to follow a lot what ISBE, his, his guidelines have given us. And I guess I'm just kind of wondering how much flexibility do we have? We have to stay all within ISBE guidelines, correct?
Yes. This document, this very lengthy document called Starting the 2020-21 School Year. This is kind of our, our, our go-to document. And we want to make sure that we're following, especially when it says required. There are words that say consider or to the greatest extent possible. But if it says required, we really want to stay within that lane. And, and we're going to try to closely track, not only in a line with, to align with IDPH and ISBE guidance. But we are trying to track very closely to 211 and to the other feeders with 211. So kids within this area are going to have more of a similar experience than, than not.
And I just wanted that also to be, you know, clear to everybody who's watching that there's a lot of guidelines that have already been decided. And it's not like we have free rein to do whatever we want.
I liken it to the Common Core. So when the Common Core came out, there were many people that didn't like it, didn't believe in it, others that were fine with it. Or, you know, anywhere in between that continuum. But the bottom line for educators was they were our approved standards by the Illinois State Board of Education and we had to follow them. So we got busy aligning our curriculum to the Common Core standards, whether we liked it personally or politically or not. This is kind of the same thing. We have professional organizations that, we have funding that we receive from. We have guidance that we receive through, our licensure comes through the Illinois State Board of Ed. The Illinois Department of Public Health is a medical organization that is responsible for the citizens of Illinois. So we really are looking to them for guidance and we will be, you know, compliant where we have to.
Thanks for clarifying. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
I also think, I mean, as you said, Lori, we all know that this is an absolutely unprecedented time. And it's one of the things that to me I have found very impactful is that this is not one plan. Y'all had to make four different plans, five different plans in a situation where the parts are constantly moving. And, you know, the complexity of that by itself, if it was one plan, was already very, very difficult. But having to have all these different plans just in case things don't go as you think. Or things change as we move forward, which we anticipate is definitely going to be what happens. There's a lot, tremendous amount of effort, obviously, that has been put in by yourself, by the cabinet, by, by the staff. Without the quality staff that we've got, you wouldn't have these great plans. And all of the plans are necessary because the reality is, as we look at it, there's not one simple plan that fits for everybody. And I think, you know, speaking as a parent and knowing that we've got 900 parents that are tuned in to this, this evening. All of us need to make a decision based on what works best for ourselves, for our children. You make decisions based on what makes, works best for children, but for staff also. And big picture, we need to be comfortable with what we're doing with our own children. Based on our, the, the levels of risk that we each have as a family coming into the fall. So thank you very much for, for all that, that you have done as a group. You guys really have been tremendous. We're all walking away learning something tonight and having to make some decisions on where we go with it.
Right. And I think the important thing too, to, to your point, Lisa, about the complexity and so many plans that we've had to develop. A lot of the work that we did, we were developing and we weren't sure what the guidelines were going to be. We weren't sure what were going to be the required or recommended components. Guidance came down from the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health on June 25th. And then by June 30th, it had already shifted. Today is July 7th. And we're able to present this to the board because we have been doing a lot of it, even scenarios that we didn't necessarily present tonight. We did a lot of what if scenarios, what if they go this way, what if they say this, what if this is required or not? So in a very short amount of time, actually physically having the document as educators in Illinois. It's been a mere two weeks and we are trying to get the scenarios as polished as possible to put before you in the larger community. So parents can make an informed decision. And again, knowing full well that everything that we've put out there, you know, there will be armchair quarterbacks all day long in every school system across the country. We've worked very hard to put, to try to think of everything that we can to, to do some very unprecedented work as educators. To, to the best of our ability in a very large and complex system.
And, you know, moving forward, I think it, it doesn't get easier, it becomes more complicated. Because as we, as you look at it, I mean, just I'm thinking simple lesson planning. You know, every teacher that does lesson planning, but typically lesson planning is done for a group of children that are in the classroom. And, and there's some stability there. And now all of a sudden, you've got a situation where there may be some children in a classroom and some will be virtual. And others will be in quarantine. And that lesson planning became not just one lesson plan, but three different folds of. A similar plan, trying to make sure that the, the education is there and the content is there, but done in three totally different ways.
Yep. We thought the spring was tough. The summer has been excruciating. And the upcoming school year is, you know, we know it's going to be the most, I'm starting my 30th year. It'll be my most challenging year yet and everybody else is, you know, across the state and country. We're going to really have to lean in, lean in, lean into each other. You see the signs all over, we're in this together, we'll get through this together. You know, no words were ever, you know, more true than how educators are going to move through a school year in, in these shifting conditions. It's going to be a really challenging year. So be supportive, be patient, be kind with, you know, comments and feedback. We are really trying to do the best that we can in a very challenging situation.
Hey, really quick, looking back through my notes, I did have one quick question on we, and I don't know if Tom Bramley's on. Because all I can say is about four of us right now. One of the kind of questions I had that I'd made in my notes that I chicken scratched around and couldn't read it until just now was. If we decide to go to a three-tiered system because of the busing situation. Will that decision be made after parents have selected it? When do we view a timeline on that so parents can kind of look at it and determine their work schedules? Or what's best for them, or when we know what our times are going to be at schools? And that's, it's a logistics question probably more than it is anything else. And understanding that, you know, my son's at Paddock, starts at 7:50, that may not be the time he starts anymore. You know, based on going forward, when do we have an idea that that decision may be made? Based on whatever we move forward with?
One of the reasons we really want to get to a, a point where parents know what our pathways are. Because then they're going to need to, that's going to be the first big decision they're going to need to make if we all, if we offer multiple pathways. They're going to have to decide which pathway works best for their family, you know, based on their children. Then another decision point within that same window will be transportation. And it, it gets to your point, Mike, if we, if we have lots of parents that are going to still require and, you know, rely on transport, uh, bus transportation. To get their children to school, we will have to move to a three-tiered system. Because we simply cannot transport 10,000 students on 150 buses. Nor do we have just a stockpile of money or even bus availability to buy a bunch more buses, which would be extraordinarily expensive. And then we would need additional drivers. So the likelihood, if we have lots of parents that. So um, the likelihood, if we have lots of parents that continue to need that bus transportation, that will move to that three-tiered system. So in terms of health or planning for their workday and, and, and what their mornings will look like, uh, you know, per family. Is really going to depend on how many people need transportation. So if we have a large number of people that say, you know what, it'll be a hardship, but we can do it. We'll figure out a way. Um, in the morning to get our kids to school, whether it's a carpool or whatnot. That's when we're going to know. And unfortunately, we're just not going to know before that until we really see the number of parents that are going to request transportation. So that's going to be very important for anybody listening that needs transportation. Uh, we will, we will ask, plead if you can get your child to school some way, somehow, not on a bus. We would love it if you would choose that option because that might be our best bet not to have to go to a three-tiered system. But again.
Are we going to advertise that to the whole community? Because it sounds like it's probably a real important thing there.
Advertise the three start times or only take transportation if you absolutely positively couldn't get your kid to school without it.
Right.
Okay, we will, we will fire that up, Morgan. Uh, will help me.
Yeah, because I mean, parents, parents don't know, they're just going to think it's, you know, business as usual until they get the. Three different start times and they're like, why is my kid having to leave at, you know, six in the morning to get to school or coming home at five o'clock at night, you know, then they're going to all.
Not that early. You're going to blow me up on Facebook, Frank. Don't put crazy numbers like that up.
You know what I mean?
It won't be six thirty and it won't be five P M. Yep. Okay, what else?
Oh, Lori, I wanted, um, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Wenda.
Okay, um, I just wanted to echo what everybody had um, already said. Thank you so much for this thorough um, presentation, you and the team. You know, you left no stone um, unturned and, you know, I wanted to um, really emphasize that um, the collaboration. Between our school district and I appreciated hearing the collaboration with um, um, hopefully Northwest Community Hospital. Um, you know, is, is, is vital, you know, we need um, robust testing, we need robust. Um, tracing, um, and again, it has to be collaborative. We, we cannot do this in, um, in isolation. It cannot just be our school. So um, I'm hoping to um, hear more about that in uh, the near future. That'll be uh, the top of my radar. Um, and certainly the uh, isolation processes and um, to, just so that we're um, we keep on the top of my, the, our heads that. An outbreak can occur at any point in time. Um, I, I'm going to emphasize again that I am a healthcare professional. I, I do work in a um. In a local hospital and of course, you know, outbreaks are, are going to be, are my concern because. Of how um, much our um, hospitals, we do not want to um, overwhelm our, our hospitals. We do not. Want to jeopardize lives and um, certainly I, I um, just wanted um, it out loud that I'm concerned for the staff. Um, and um, and all the teachers because I'm, um, as well as all the students that um, are going to um. Uh, as we open the, the doors in, in August, um. But um, I'm excited that we're going to be vigilant as a um, as a school district to ensure um, the highest safety. Of everyone that's going to walk through our doors. So um, again, thank you all um, for um, bringing all this information together and uh, sharing it with us.
So Wenda, to your comment, and I know you're a healthcare professional, I know this weekend you reached out to me about contact, contact tracing and. John Hopkins seemed to do the trick for you because it's a incredible organization. Um, would you be interested in joining one of our conversations with Karen Floor and our nurse subgroup? Who have been wonderful to work with and are really helping um, just continue to layer our proto, and develop our protocols and procedures and our safety enhancements? Is that something you would like to try to participate in if your work schedule would allow you to do so?
Absolutely. I would love that. That would be fabulous. Thank you.
All right, so we will, we'll add you to our next meeting, which I can't remember. I know we just spoke the other day, but I'm sure we have another meeting this week or next. I'll, I'll let you know when that is, Wenda.
I will send her an invitation.
Wanted to just mention a couple of things. Um, I know that the presentation C L was great and I'm really excited to see. Uh, I, I sat in a couple of, of those committee meetings and I know that there's going to be components of. Of C L R, responsiveness, uh, you know, culturally responsive, includes inclusiveness within the S E L. That we're going to be providing to teachers. I think that's a, that's very important. Uh, as we kind of touch on their experiences in our schools, particularly with the, the summer we've had with uh. The ra- racial unrest and, and things like that. So I think that's, that's a great addition because this, the summer's been crazy in so many ways. Two thousand twenty has been crazy in so many ways. It's not, it's not just the um, the COVID mess. Um, I just want to also say that, uh, you know, to the extent we've had a lot of parents uh, concerned citizens watching this, you know. I think it is, I want to reiterate what Dr. Hein said about just being kind to one another. These are just, these are things that are very emotional because. They deal with life and death, they deal with our kids, they live, the, the safety of our teachers, these things that we hold dear uh, so much. But it's so important that we kind of take a step back from the national scene and understand that everyone here are, that we're all neighbors. You know, we're all together in this and we're going to have very different opinions maybe about everything from masks to. You know, whether we should, which, which choice we select, but it really does make a difference when people tone, you know. Have your debate, make your points made, but tone it down, have it, have a certain decorum about how you talk to each other. Because it does make a difference, uh, because, you know, God forbid, there's another uh, you know, outbreak. Uh, we don't want to turn on, on one another. That's the last thing we should do and. Um, this community, I, I've been pretty encouraged, see, seeing the type of discourse about this. I, it hasn't been as bad on a local level. Maybe, you know, that, at least from what I've seen, maybe I don't see a- all of it, but um. I just want to re, I just want to reiterate, uh, re- reiterate that to everybody because we're all in this together and it's not. It's not just a, a, a saying, it's, it's very important, so it's, it's necessary. So.
And, and you're, I, I agree Zubair, we, we're all that we have, right? The, the community is what keeps us strong. And, and that, the, the commentary, the worst of times. Brings out the worst in some people, but it should bring out the best in most people. And I hope that we as a community, all of us, will allow this opportunity for it to bring out the best in us.
All right, um, a- any other questions for us? Do, do we want to, does any particular board member want to weigh in at this point on kind of their hopes, their uh, scenario leanings? Um, this isn't a, an action item, we're not voting. This really and truly was designed to just be a, a committee of the whole. We're fo- very focused on delivering this plan to you, but I am, you know, as the superintendent, in- interested in knowing what my board members think. Um, are you interested in, in sharing your thoughts with us? So we kind of have a sense of where our board stands with our scenarios?
I'm sorry. Frank, you, go ahead and talk, but in the meantime, while you're talking, can whoever has control of the slide deck, take us back to the slide that gives the scenarios one, two? And all, the floor is yours, Frank.
I was going to say, it seems to be boiled down to two scenarios. Uh, one is that the kids are going to go to school, have class with all the. All the safety uh, factors put into place or, you know, the second one being the kids will distance learn. Um, seems to break down into those two categories, uh, and I assume those. Two categories can mutually exist, or is it going to be one of those things where depending on what parents choose, we may go all one way or all the other?
So Frank, because we were flipping through a scenario, two and three, you're talking about the in-person with the health and safety modifications and.
Yeah, two and. Yeah, I guess it'd be through three.
I think it meant strategically that we were leaning towards those two, two scenarios being what we, we feel as though we could really. Um, do a great job in providing. Uh, we've heard and it's, it's, you know, anybody that you talk to, you talk to two, two people, you get two different scenarios, two different recommendations. We certainly heard it with public comment, open schools, keep it distance learning. That's kind of consistently what you're hearing. So those are the two that we think are the most viable for our community. Although there were aspects of blended and hybrid that we really did like from, again, from a capacity perspective, we are very concerned. Um, you know, for, for our community in terms of. What would, what would the childcare implications be for working parents and we just don't.
In and out of school, I think that could be really difficult to deal with. That's why I would kind of think it would be either, you're either going to be, have the kids always go to school. With the, the health and safety modifications, or you're going to have them stay home and distance learn. And, and I kind of was wondering is, depending on what the parents. With responses from the parents, can these two scenarios mutually exist, or is it going to be one or possibly one or the other?
I think they have to mutually exist because just for the reason that scenario four would be challenging. Scenario three would be very challenging as a standalone. Because that would mean that every, that there would have to be somebody in every home. Or parents would have to be comfortable leaving their children unattended, which of course we don't recommend, um, to virtually learn if they're at work.
I also think there's an engagement aspect that comes with it, Lori, that. Scenario three, some students will be able to make that positive engagement and be motivated. There are a lot that, that need the touch. They need the interaction with the teacher, with a, you know, that leadership figure. In order to be successful. And to, to have that as a standalone, it's not viable, you know, that's what makes us strong is our staff. And the staff engagement in, in person to person is, is not something that we can replicate.
Correct.
Just thinking a lot of right now, after the presentation and reading and kind of seeing, I mean. I, I mean, I kind of look at that we, we need to have it, have our in-person instruction with all the, with all the safety. And you, we need to have the, the option for opt-outs. And I know that makes it difficult because there's this two different uh, um, you know, ways to go for staff and everything. But I think that's important because there will be some folks who have very, very legitimate concerns about going back to school. And they may have, they may be living with elder, uh, elderly parents or grandparents or people with, you know, uh. Opprised immune systems and things like that and uh, we need to give that opportunity for people and then at least they can own the choice. Uh, you know, like um, you know, if you want and, you know, we're, I'm confident that our virtual learning cohort system is going to be really great. Um, and whoever decides that though, that there is some, there's some agency to it that is going to make a difference where. I think people just feel better about the choice they took because they made the choice. And so, and so I, I, I'm leaning towards that type of scenario.
Oh, go ahead, Lisa.
I was just going to say, it also gives the opportunity to develop robust lur- virtual learning. Which if they're completely standalone, then, then potentially we don't have that robust. Virtual aspect to it, which is, which is really important as part of the uh. Part of the plan. Anthony?
I, I echo your uh, you know, your, your statement Zubair and I do think that. Combining a scenario two and scenario three, I, I do feel like the. You know, the choice needs to be left with the parents in terms of. How much risk they're willing to um, you know, be exposed and, and again, you're trying to balance um. Differences with, with families and, and um, you know, health issues and so forth. And I, I can speak for myself personally, my, my wife is immune compromised and, and we'd probably take added precautions. That other families may not need to, um, but I, I look at that as, you know, being an option. I know it's going to be challenging. But uh, again, it's, it's challenging times. We're, we're dealing with a situation that we haven't been exposed to before. And I think in the end, you, you have to leave that choice up to, you know, the parents and what they think is best.
I'm also in support of the in-person and the opt-out choice. One concern that I have with the opt-out, and I understand our reasons for structuring it this way at this time. Um, is the commitment through the end of the year. Just with employers changing so often where a family may have work from home flexibility for a few months, but that could. Go away very quickly, um, and they may, their situation may change. And so for them to potentially have to be locked into that scenario, I know my family wouldn't be able to guarantee that we would have someone in that. Space to be able to do um, the homeschooling piece of it. So that's just something that I would want to flag as a concern. Um, the other piece is the. The um, symptom cell or the parent certification of symptoms. And not screening even temperatures, um, just because. That's, that just, with this infection and the way that it can pass so quickly. Um, that would make me nervous that we aren't at least scanning temperatures um, upon.
For all, for all students?
Yeah, Lori, I don't necessarily think it would have to be all students, but if there could be some sort of a random. You know, the, the time commitment that goes with scanning every student at the beginning of every day or every change period, however, it would be plugged in. That's lost learning time. But if there could be something put in place that was random, just kind of a double check on. To try to keep people honest. It may or may not work, but.
Sam and Lisa, I talked to the nurse group when I was on the call with them yesterday and I asked that very question. You know, do you want to do random temperature checks? Karen, please feel free to pop in and I kind of forced the issue with the nurses. There are medical professionals. Do you see the benefit? And um, Karen, do you care to pop back?
Sure, absolutely. So. I don't know why my audio is crazy today. Um, you know, temperature is not one of the symptoms that we're going to see in kids. We're going to see more abdominal symptoms and we will see fever. So um, we are working in servicing our nurses on what COVID symptoms look like in pediatrics as opposed to what they look like in adults. Working with both. Um, we need to be well-versed in what we're looking for. But I think it's going to make parents very unhappy because our nurses are going to err on the side of safety. We really want to make sure that we are, we are doing our due diligence and letting parents know. And, and, you know, working very, very carefully with the healthcare providers in our area. So that we're doing everything so that the safety of everyone is at the utmost of our decision-making process. If this, if, if temperature taking were the answer, that would be absolutely what we would, we would do.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Nurses also did say that they really would rather um, from a, from a safety perspective and from how they know their, their staffs at the building. Um, felt last year in the spring prior to the closure. Um, they had a, a procedure that they used. If anybody exhibited, whether it was a cough or a sniffle or a sneeze. Teachers were able to send a child to the nurse to be checked, to be, to be checked out. And at that time, you know, they might have their temperature checked or run through the symptom checklist. They felt that that worked well. Pre, pre-closure and they would like to, to replicate that um, that uh, process, if you will. Um, in the fall. Is, is that correct, Karen? Did I articulate that properly?
Very, very well said, yes. We would, we would prefer using the eyes of the teacher who know the students well, better than the nurses do. Because they know when the, the children are exhibiting symptoms that they don't look like they normally do. And between the input from the parent and assessing the child, we'll have a better way to screen for kids who are sick and make sure that they go home.
Are there, uh, are, are there any thoughts about uh, uh, whether or not through uh, a questionnaire to the parents? Maybe part of this registration process about whether or not their children or parents have already had uh, the COVID virus. Potentially maybe having antibodies, you know. I just, I, I, the idea being that, not that it's going to affect on an individual kid's basis, but if you were to find out. That a certain percentage of kids have already gotten this or their, their parents have already gotten it, that, that might just. Uh, inform your planning mo- moving forward.
We did not talk about that. What do you think, Karen?
I, 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 I do appreciate that, that, but it is HIPAA protected. We cannot ask them. To provide that information, but if it were provided to us, it would be an added tool we could use, absolutely.
So, yeah, so I guess HIPAA prevents us from asking that, you're saying?
Yes.
It's, it's their private medical information, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I know, I mean, that, that, it definitely is their private medical information, but you know, I guess they could disclose that. We don't, we can't require that, I guess, I, I guess that's.
If, if they'd like to share it, I'm happy, I'm happy to have that information and use that in my toolbox. The more tools we have to work this year, the nurses will be working very diligently. The more tools we have, the more effective we can be.
Can I just um, piggyback on what you just said, um, uh, Karen, um, and just addressing this um, in the fall. Um, I just want to like emphasize that um, and people, um, children and staff members can come into the building. Um, with uh, with symptoms of just coughing or um, plus or minus a fever and. And it could be the cold or the common cold, it could be flu and it could be COVID. Um, so.
Allergies that could be.
And as we're, um, and as we're making it, and, and in particular the, the fall, that's when we're going to really see all those different things. So, um, as we're gonna, uh, look at students and say, you know what, you're, you're obviously sick. You may not have COVID, but you're obviously sick and you're going to go home. Um, you know, the question remains, um, or is that student, is that, um, is a onus upon the family to say, okay, well, we are definitely going to go for a COVID test? And do they have to reveal that information for us? Is that robust testing? Um, that, um, if we are not collaborative as, um, as a state, not just, not just within our district. If we don't know what the, um, um, the other, uh, healthcare, um, organizations, you know, if we can't collaborate our, um, our related information, unfortunately, um, we can do as much contact tracing as we want to. It's not enough.
Lori, can I go back to the self-certify?
Sure.
The, another point that the nurses brought up yesterday and we talked about was that with the self-certify, one of the benefits is that our families then are, the majority of our families then would be providing us information before their students are entering either the schools or the buses. And so that's, uh, an additional measure as opposed to onsite temperature checking.
That's, that's a very good point and I'm glad you highlighted it, Ann, because if the parents are, have to do that be- before they send their kids off to school, they, they won't put them on a bus. Because if we put them on a bus with, you know, forty-nine or forty-eight other students, and hopefully they'd all have their PPE on. That, that's why that home piece is going to be important.
And I think as a whole, we need to certainly err on the side of caution. And so there may be misdiagnoses that come with that. Um, but we also have to err on the side of trusting the people that are around us, to be honest. And to self-diagnose and to report in the way that they, they should be. It's, it goes back to that whole, you, you know, you can't manage to the, the one or two percent that are, are not going to be following the rules. You have to make the assumption that, that most of us are following.
And Karen, I think it's important too, to just continue to reiterate that the, um, the infection rate in children thankfully is very low. I believe it's two percent or less is.
It's, it's less than two percent. Am I on? I'm on.
Yes, you're on.
Thank you. Um, it is less than two percent. Less, less than one percent of children pass it back and forth. So we are more concerned about the adults and the adults bringing it in. So one of our, one of our things that we're doing is we're limiting the number of volunteers that come in. We're limiting the number of adults that are connecting with our kids. Um, we are very mu- much concerned with how adults are spreading the virus rather than ch- children are definitely there, but we are less concerned about children spreading the virus than we are about adults. You know, if we want our schools to remain open, we have to work together. And the three principles that we're going to be working with are system checking every day. We need our parents to check the systems, you know, do that system check every day, ask the same questions every single day. Knowing that those s- symptoms can progress throughout the school day. So if your child wakes up with a headache and a runny nose and they have seasonal allergies or a, a, a common condition that they've had for years, know that sometimes it might progress. And if it does progress, we need you to come pick those children up. We don't want to have them sitting in an isolation room all day. Another thing to think about, all the kids need to wear a mask. That's the second of the three principles. Remember, wearing a mask is not to protect the children. It's not to protect the staff, but it's to protect each other. We're trying to reduce transmission. So with the mask on, we're reducing transmission between people. The most effective use of the mask is to have everyone wearing them. The CDC recommends that people wear clo- cloth-based coverings in public when in settings around people that don't live in your household. So that's something we really want to keep in mind. And the third major principle that we're going to follow for health and safety is routinely and strategically effectively washing our hands throughout the day with soap and water if possible. So doing those things, using these three principles, we'll be able to reduce absences, decrease the likelihood of closing classrooms or schools and keeping COVID-19 from spreading through our community. But it is going to take all of us working together, knowing that it's a very fluid situation and it could change daily for everyone.
And as we're, um, as you mentioned that about adults Karen, can I just, um, uh, just, um, ask that question? Um, this has implications for like PTA and, um, so on, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're trying to figure out how that all works because, you know, as adults, we are, we are wanting things to be back to the way they were for our kids. And we all understand that and we all want that. But we don't want to risk someone's health and safety for that. So we're working together to find out what can we do? And we'll follow the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines that they set forth for us.
Question on, um, sort of our school boundaries, temporary school boundaries, uh, not revisiting the school boundary conversation right now. But, um, as we are getting data on students and families that opt out, if we are seeing, you know, vast disparities from school to school of families that are choosing, you know, of significant more portions of families that are opting out and creating more space in those schools, is there, has there been conversation, um, or is this even on the table at all? Of potentially leveraging that to spread out our student population and our teacher and staff population a little bit more physically?
We have not had any formal conversations about that. Um, no.
Okay.
But it's, it's not to say that we couldn't, uh, you know, tomorrow, because I've already been texting with people tonight and my wheels are turning. So it could happen tonight or it's something that we could talk about tomorrow. But again, it's, it's, we would have to wait and see. And then I don't know if we would want to shift boundaries. Could you imagine like the parents? It goes, so I don't know if, 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 if we should do that or would do that. But, you know, it's certainly something that I can, you know, talk with the team about. But I don't know if we want to throw that in the mix too, like, and by the way, you might have to go to a different school.
Yeah, no, I agree. I was just curious if that was something that had even been discussed at this point.
Too much to expect anybody to, to handle.
There, there was a question that was thrown out by somebody, um, a community member with regard to um, board member transparency in terms of the decision-making we're making for our own children. And, um, I don't, if, if anybody else is comfortable sharing, they're welcome to. Um, but I'm comfortable sharing the decision that I will make for my children. My younger son will go back to in-person with a teacher in front of him and with risk mitig- mitigation and all the cautions that the, uh, D-15 staff has described today. I think the importance of him being in a school setting with, with peers, with a real live teacher in front of him for me is very important. And I'm willing to take that risk. My older son is a, uh, is a university student. And he will also go back to his university in the fall for very similar reasons. And I know that there's some safety insecurity that goes along with that. And there's a little bit of risk-taking, but at the same time, I think at the age that he is, the, the in-person and continuing forward with life is very impactful for him. And going into social, emotional, that, that to me is the right decision for me and a risk that I'm willing to take as a parent.
Yeah, and I mean, I'll chime in on this and kind of both to Lori's earlier question and to Lisa's point. Um, for those of you that don't think that we listen to you and we make our minds up before, we don't. So, you know, I came in looking at, based on the scenarios that were presented between scenario four and scenario three. Uh, from a personal decision, my son is somebody who, he's a very social kid. He needs to be around kids. He likes being around kids. He likes being around adults. Um, you know, he needs that social interaction. And so for him not to have that social interaction the last four plus months or four months now has been something that has been difficult for us because he does have energy that we need to refocus somewhere. Um, and so how do we refocus that energy? And one of the ways is that now we've started a little bit of getting out with family and stuff. So coming into scenario four and scenario three, my first instinct was we need some sort of hybrid model. We need some, some way to, uh, a hybrid to go, yes, the kids need the social interaction. They don't need the social interaction. We can give all the kids some social interaction, would be one day on, two days on, two days off, one week on. However, we decide to implement it. But starting to listen to what everybody has to say and reading some comments, you know, I don't necessarily get to be on Facebook all the time while it's going on, being able to read the comments that you all are making. So yes, we are on Facebook and we are reading the comments that you're making. We're not necessarily going to reply to all of them because we don't have the ability to. But I'm seeing what's coming through and I'm listening to the ninety comments that we had, which is by far the most that we've had during our term. The right now, four hundred and fifty people that are on Facebook right now, we hear what you're saying and we're taking that into consideration. So my initial thought was scenario four. There's really no question to me. Every, everybody needs that interaction. But listening to what you have to say as a community and knowing that I'm looking at it and to some extent under a microscope within my own home and looking and taking that outside that there are some twelve thousand people and not everybody has the same opinion of me. And it's my job to represent that opinion. You've elected me to do that. And so now going from, I absolutely believe that scenario four was the right way to go, looking at scenario three to me now makes the most sense. Um, and kind of to what Lisa says. And again, what I've stated here in the last couple of minutes is my son needs that. He needs to be in person. He needs that social interaction. He has had wonderful teachers that he needs it to be in person. I'm a person who went through high school, undergrad, my MBA and law school, and I cannot do online learning. I can't. I know one hundred percent that I need to be physically in front of a person to academically achieve. And not only the academic achievement part of it, but I need the social aspect of it as well. And he's the same way. So I would take that and say, my son is going to go back to school. But I believe that for everybody, that scenario three is the best option that we have out there. So to piggyback on what Lisa said, I am of the same belief with Lisa that while I believe that the best situation for my particular situation, my family and my son, is to go back to school. I understand that for some of you out there, that doesn't make the most sense. And based on what I heard tonight, what you have emailed to us, what I see on Facebook as you are doing this, and I apologize if I'm looking away from the screen sometime, but I'm looking down into Facebook to see kind of what's going on because your comments while this discussion is taking place are important to us. And so again, going into this meeting based on what was sent and the few emails I had received prior to this meeting, scenario four to me was a no-brainer. Now I believe based on those that have chosen to participate, because that's all I can look at is those who have chosen to participate. I can't make anybody else participate in this process. But those that have chosen to pro- participate and made your voices heard, I hear you. I don't know about the rest, the other six, but I hear you. And my decision now is to go with scenario three, and I think that's what's best for our community. Yeah, so for me, for, for me, I, I, you know, I really think it's great to have the kids back into school. Social aspect of it. It's also the motivation of being there with the other kids, learning simultaneously and being able to interface with the teachers, getting that, getting that attention, personal attention, you know, either for uh, extra help or for, uh, you know, extra enrichment. It, I think it's very critical to the, to the children's learning. Um, so I, I'd be going with scenario two there, have the kids going, getting to school with the, uh, the health and safety modifications is the way I, I'm going to decide for my children. Um, but like I said, you know what? People have different situations in their households, uh, dis- different risk factors. So I could see, uh, how other people would want to go with scenario three and do the, uh, do the opt-out and do the virtual learning. So personally, scenario two, but I can see how scenario three would be applicable to certain circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else care to share?
Um, I, I don't think it's, um, a surprise. Uh, I'm, I'm glad that we have option for scenario two and three available. But, um, uh, certainly, um, I believe in, um, March and April. Uh, my husband and I talked for days about this, um, even before we had this board meeting. Even before, um, we thought about, um, what was going to, um, happen with the schools or we were, um, we were going to ensure that, um, that my youngest son was going to go with, uh, opt-out and virtual learning. It is, um, I've seen too many people die, um, and that, that like hurts to, uh, to say that out loud. Um, and you know, e- especially if you'd, if you don't say, see it, uh, in a, um, day in and out, um, and we weren't ravaged. Our community was not ravaged as much as the city of Chicago was. But I'm going to tell you, we, um, um, our, our hospitals, well as many other hospitals, we were running out of drugs. You know, and that's, that's really scary thing to say. You know, so, um, I, I do have to, um, again, emphasize over and over again, we need to be vigilant about an outbreak. And we need to ensure we do not overwhelm our healthcare sys- system. You know, people will die. And then, um, then again, really scares me.
So are you Lynn, do you have a scenario you're leaning towards?
Um, I.
So scenario three, virtual learning cohorts?
Yeah, we will opt-out.
Okay.
I kind of already said which one I preferred. I think, um, for my children which are still in District fifteen, uh, you know, I'll probably, well, I will have them go to school and for in-person learning for all the reasons that have been kind of mentioned by Mike and Frank and, and Lisa. You know, what my, I mean, I think that there was, there's, there's a so- social component to it. And there's also just a mo- motivation to get people to, to really, uh, uh, get, stay on task and, and things like that. And, but you know, um, that's why I, I, I prefer scenario three because I definitely can understand. Um, and also one, one of the other reasons is I do believe from speaking with, you know, everyone I know in terms of physicians who have been in, on the front lines of these things and kind of the statistics that, that Lori and Karen had mentioned, just about the pretty low incidence of, uh, children getting sick and the low incidence of them passing that on. That gives me personally some, uh, solace in sending my kids over to school. If it wasn't the case that way, I would probably think, think twice about it. But that combat, combine, you're always balancing things. There's always competing interests. Um, so that, uh, that combined with the, the need for in-person person learning, I've had nothing but great experiences with all the teachers that my kids have, have, uh, had the, you know, fortunate experience to be with. And so to, to have that on a day-to-day basis is going to me, it means a lot to me.
So then Zubair, just so I'm clear, are you saying a combo of two, in-person and virtual? Or are you saying in, um, in-person with the health and safety modifications?
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, um, in-person with the option of that, that, that you can opt-out.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
I think what I hear there, and I, I, I agree with Zubair there. If in fact, one of my children were to get sick, then they could opt-out and go virtual during a quarantine period, but then I would send them back.
Yeah, same here.
Okay. Um, Sam, and then Anthony, if you cared to weigh in and share? I know Sam, you're a little, you're a little one's, a little one, so.
Yes, my daughter is three, so she is not quite in schools yet. So we do not have to make the choice within District fifteen, but we do, um, still have to make that choice within, you know, our own childcare. And we have personally chosen to have her, um, in daycare part-time and then we'll be easing into, um, back to full-time. Um, that being said, you know, I really believe in giving families the most flexibility that we possibly can in this situation. Um, especially one that changes every day, it feels like, uh, especially right now. Um, and just in thinking about this from an equity perspective, I know that there's many of our families who don't have the privilege of choosing whether or not they want to stay home with their kids. Um, and really may be having to make the impossible choice of choosing to put food on the table or choosing to risk the health and safety of their family. Um, and so I want to honor that and the difficult, um, place that a lot of our families are in. Um, and let them choose the situation that will work best for their family and their circumstance. Um, so that being said, I would choose the mixture of scenarios two and three.
Right, thank you.
I think, uh, I think I mentioned earlier Lori, but actually I do have a question. So the, the slide that we mentioned towards the end in regards to, uh, you know, parents that are, aren't comfortable with the scenarios being reviewed, that may choose to disenroll. That would be an option regardless of the scenario.
Correct. Any parent could choose to disenroll their child at any point in their educational career in a district, but that would always be an option, you know? So that would always be an option. And it would continue to be with, uh, where we are now with COVID.
I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused, uh, maybe because it's late at night, but, um, when you think of the combination of scenario two and scenario three, isn't scenario three, everyone's going, you go to school and then, but you can opt out of it. What's, I mean, what is the combo between two and three? Is that?
I'll clarify it and it's, it is written and now that I'm looking, staring at it for an extended length of time, even though I've looked at this deck at least 1,000 times. So scenario two is kids are going back to school. My little handwriting is a little F, a number two and a little F, face to face. Kids are going back to school. All those 20-plus slides at the beginning of the deck, we're going to put all kinds of layered safety protocols and, and enhancements in place. But kids are going back to school. Guidance says get kids back in school. This is the, you know, article from the American Pediatric Society, get kids back in school. They're going back to school with safety enhancements. Scenario three, however, is people are opting out of in-person instruction. So really what we should have done is flip that, opt out of in-person instruction. And you're opting out because you're, you want to be put into a virtual learning classroom all year long. So that, those are the two that from many of the board members I'm hearing, kind of a little combination of those two. And I think in our administratively, that's what we were leaning towards as well. We wanted to give our parents a choice if we could manage it. Because for a variety of different reasons, parents feel a variety of different ways. So we would like them to be able to choose what scenario works best for their family and their children at this moment in time. Then a third option, regardless of if we go with one or two or three, whatever, if parents don't like anything that we're, we're, we're serving, we're offering up, um, they can opt out. And either do homeschooling or go private or go parochial or other type of religious school. And, and that's always their right to do that. Does that clarify? Things, Zubair? All right. Thanks. Back to you, Anthony.
So I'll, I'll reiterate. So I'm, I'm still, I'm leaning towards, uh, you know, combination of two and three. Uh, I, I do want parents to have the option, again, based on their risk tolerance. And I know our personal preferences may differ and that's okay. And I think that scenario allows the most flexibility for, um, our differences in, in, in risk. And the other thing I'm looking at is again, the survey that went out. You know, if you, if you base it off the survey, you're going to have about 70% or so, parents that will choose to send their, their students back to, or their kids back to school face to face. But, um, I'm also, you know, looking at the, the lack of diversity. And is that really a true representation of, right, our community as a whole? So there, I have some concerns that there are probably voices and opinions that haven't been heard yet. And I still feel that you need to give them, give everyone an option as to their child's education for this year.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah. My, my hang up on scenario four, just because I know there, there are some people asking in the background of the why of scenario four, is it off the table? Is it not? For me as a parent, my hang up with scenario four is that I think that kids need consistency. And consistency says you, you have rules, people have expectations. You do the same thing over and over and over again. In my life and the way that it works with myself and our children, the, uh, they respond very well to there's consistency and they understand how things work. And that on again, off again, aspect of, of the hybrid, you're half a day or on again, on a week, off a week, to me doesn't work for my children. And I'm, this is a come going in the Wayback Machine. Back to the late start, early release days, my hanging up with that way back then was 100% exactly that. The, the inconsistency was something that my children wouldn't have been able to handle then well. And I still don't think that it brings out the best in them now.
I would agree, Lisa, and I, I think that our district has invested a lot in, you know, again, building up with e-learning and, and virtual learning and that. And I'm really to make sure that the parents that do potentially choose that option, that we aren't going to skip a beat for the fall session and then move into the school year. So I, I do think that we're in a much better position where we've been able to plan and, and have conversations and, um, you know, make some of those tough decisions, but, uh, much better prepared than where we were a few months ago.
Sure.
All right. Can I just ask, um, about, um, some of the staff members that are medically compromised or, um, mu-compromised, um, do, uh, do those staff members, um, would we move those, um, into the virtual learning cohorts? Just to, um, protect that, um, those people or those, that group?
That's a conversation, um, that we've engaged with, uh, and Lisa Nuss is leading that charge with the workforce, um, group. That is one of the ways in which we would try to balance that as if, and when we surveyed staff, we did encourage them to reach out if they think that they might need some type of workplace modification or accommodation. Or if, if we go with a virtual classroom route, that they might be sectioned into that being their, uh, their role for the year or until we're in phase five. So yes, I mean, is it a, is it an absolute given? It is not. Each, I, just like our special ed students, our students with special needs, uh, it's case by case and individualized. The same thing would be with our, our staff. So our, our, our staff, and I'm sure a lot of them are still hanging on and listening, you know, will need to reach out to HR, here within the next couple of weeks to let them, to let us know if they need any workplace accommodations or if they would like to, uh, be considered for the virtual learning classroom based on their, their health issues. That's a, a conversation that we need to start having sooner than later. So we know how, if we, uh, land on a VLC model or one of the things that we offer, we need to figure out how to determine, um, who we staff into those rooms.
And Wendy, that will be handled similarly to any other medical accommodation that we have to make in any other year. So just like parents are going to be making decisions over the next few weeks, staff are going to also be, um, asked to make, um, not a decision, but, uh, reaching out to us to say if they need medical accommodations, bless you Lori. And, um, we will try to accommodate those as best we can. And we, the safety of our staff is, is important to us as much as it is for the safety of our students. And as much as we can accommodate them, um, our workforce task committee, um, would like to do that. So, um, we do need that information from our staff. So if you guys are still out there hanging on, um, in the next week or so, when you're asked, if you need any accommodations, please, the sooner we get that, the easier it will be for us to try to match those accommodations with the needs of our students.
All right. Anything else for us to know or consider before?
I wanted to clarify one thing while looking through the scenarios. So scenario two is everybody's back at school. We're really not giving people an opt-out. It's you either come back to school or you disenroll.
Right. Right. If you, if you did, if we did just scenario two.
Right.
Our doors are open. Please come. We're putting safety measures in place or
There's no virtual option.
Right, right.
Scenario three is the parents get a choice of do I send my kid to school or do we stay virtual? Understanding that the choice that they make is going to be a year-long choice unless we enter phase five because of the planning that needs to go on the academic side and the curriculum side for ensuring that the, the academic curriculum is, uh, continuous throughout the year.
With one caveat, Mike, prior to listening to Sam and a few others, um, you know, we were saying all year. So I, I certainly want to talk to the team tomorrow to say it, would we be able to do this on a semester or trimester basis? Cause we run, you know, different, differently based on elementary or junior high. We, we can take another, you know, we'll, we'll go back and take a look and see like what, what are the, what would be the pros? What would be the cons if we really did it that way?
Okay. And then scenario four, we're looking at is basically saying schools open however we decide to work it. And we'll say, you come to school on Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you stay home. You don't get an option to opt out. You're going to come to school and you're going to do it from home or you're going to disenroll essentially is what we're doing. So as scenario three is really the only option to giving the parents choices based on whatever their individual desires and reasoning is for wanting either their kids to go to school or to stay home so that we can have kind of consistency across the board.
So scenario three really is the virtual learning cohort. If we wanted parents to have a choice, we would be giving them two scenarios to choose from. So the way that they would choose from being back in school, face to face, scenario two would be an option for parents. Scenario three would be an option for parents. If again, if we chose to give them two options and that scenario three would be they're going virtual, that they would like their child or their, their children to go virtual. So if we want parents to have a choice, we need to offer a, a, a variety of scenarios. And, um, and then always the, the scenario, it's not really a scenario, it's just an option would be to disenroll. And any, any family in the state of Illinois has a homeschooling option and/or to go to a, a private or a parochial or another religiously based school system, you know, based on.
Okay. Thanks. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. So time is almost 11. Do we have any other questions? I appreciate your, your thinking, your, your willingness to be open, asking questions, helping us, you know, further flesh out these ideas, giving us more to think about. Any other questions, anything that you want us to know before we, uh, you know, Lisa, Shupai will wrap the meeting and then my team, you know, has work to do over these next couple of days. Additional work to solidify our, our choices. Anything else for, for us?
Um, I, again, I just wanted to reiterate to the administration, to the teachers that have chimed in, to the PAs that have chimed in, to the community members that have chimed in, we appreciate everything that you're saying to us. We hear you. We're taking everything into consideration. I think you've heard that from the seven of us today that our minds are, we're not made up coming into this discussion and there's still room and flexibility in there over the next couple of days to work through the issue. So again, you know, we can only hear from the people that are participating. So if you know other people that are interested, email us, you know, email Dr. Hines. Send us information about your particular instance, because your particular instance may very well dovetail into somebody else's as well. So you may not have the only issue that's out there. So, um, please feel free to email us, you know, we got a couple of days to make these decisions because we do have to start planning for the school year. So, but we hear you and we appreciate all the input that you guys have provided.
Um, one question that I saw come up, um, was around Spanish language and this presentation being available in Spanish. So, and I, it sounded like it is, uh, will or will be available in Spanish, but can you just confirm that?
It's already on the website in Spanish. So if anyone would like to see it, it's posted.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commentary? Further discussion points?
Just thank you all. This is a lot.
And thank you. It, it has been a lot, but it's, it's very, very important and we're very committed to getting this right. Or as right as possible based on, uh, the, the current conditions. So, you know, we, um, feel proud of this collaborative effort. It took a lot of people with a lot of thinking, spending a lot of time laboring over every idea to put it together. So thanks for your active participation and, um, we're going to work really hard to, to solidify what it is we're going to offer, communicate it and do those parent forums as we've listed to try to, elicit even more feedback before we, uh, you know, close the window on, um, what the school year will look like and what we're going to be able to provide to our students and staff. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hines and staff and everybody in the background. We know that, uh, it's a tremendous, tremendous village effort going on back there.
You got it.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks for joining us tonight. It was a, it was a good one.
It was. Thanks so much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.